Okay, and commissioners, we are live. It's almost nine.
We recall this May sixteenth meeting of the Riley County Commission to order. Please everybody call. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, good Thursday morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Beautiful pre-summer meeting. Morning. Looking forward to hot temperatures, right, Rich?
It's how it rads them a little bit.
Okay. Well, we got a lot on our agenda today and this morning, so we'll get started here with some public comment this morning. So we have, I know Ron, you've got something you'd like to speak about, so.
I would.
Yes, if you would state your name and where you're from, and he asked for a little extra time than the three minutes, but he's been sweet for about five or so, and I didn't figure it'd be a problem.
Thanks, John. I'm Ron Wilson. We live in southeast Riley County. Told the commissioner I have two compliments and a gripe, and so the compliments shouldn't count on the timeline, I think, right?
No, no. We might add a little bit of time depending. Well, after the compliments, we'll cut off time.
Makes sense. I do want to express compliments to the Commission for establishing the Riley County Rural Economic Development Advisory Board and for the opportunity to participate on that. Really appreciate you all acknowledging the citizens of the county border to border and the needs and really appreciate, really want to compliment you for acknowledging that voice and participating in the recent rural revitalization conference in Leonardville. Want to compliment you on that. Second compliment, that group recently met with the mayors of the small towns in Riley County. And great dialogue, and I think we're going to be with them some more when we ask, what's your view of county government? They immediately said, we believe our commissioners are open to us, and if we went to them with an issue, they would do anything they possibly could to help. So that's really a high compliment to you. So, and I know you're dealing with a whole lot of issues, uncontrollables and cost increases, et cetera. So I compliment you for your service. As to the gripe, the larger issue is property tax burden on families, people with fixed income and so forth. And I hate to tell this story, but it's true. When I grew up here, went to K C, made a big circle and came back. And when we did, my dad gave me some advice, and he said, don't come to Riley County because of the property taxes. And we followed his advice. We went to Park County, eventually had the opportunity to come back to the home place here in Riley County. Kind of painful to tell that as a proud Riley Countyan, but that is what he told me. So the larger issue is the property tax burden, and I know you guys deal with that all the time. My specific gripe today has to do with the mechanics of the appraisal process. And it's really a very narrow and specific issue as it applies to us. We live in southeast Riley County on the family ranch, just a couple of miles from Manhattan's sewage fields, as a matter of fact. And when we moved back, built a house big enough for the four kids we had living at home at the time, so mom's house is next to us. This is 2024. Her hundred-year, hundred-and-one-year-old house, the value went up $50,000 on it. Our house, that my wife and I live in, the valuation went up, I think, $90,000 on it roughly. And so and this is, of course, on top of the significant increases last year. And so I wanted to look into that and understand how this happens. And as I understand it, houses are to be valued based on fair market value, which is determined by similarly situated sales within the county within six months. And I would suggest that that works well in the city of Manhattan, where there's a lot of interchangeable properties and turnover, and not so well out in the country where we are. Specifically, within six months, there's not a lot of churn in farmland. It's stable out our way. But the bigger issue seems to me is Riley County's planning rules protect against urban encroachment, which I really appreciate. And in the process, that limits the usability and saleability of that land for other purposes. I appreciate the protection from urban encroachment. I believe that the appraiser's office should take into account the limiting factor that those policies place on the value of a rural property. The goal is to compare apples and apples to similarly situated properties. And so our house isn't in Shering Brook. It's not in Grandmere. Its contest, its setting is in his own farm. And that adversely affected, the value is affected by the setting, the rural setting we are in, and by our own rules here in Riley County. And so it seemed to me that the appraisal staff should take that into account when calculating those values. You have what the numbers say, then they should take those factors into account. So we made an appeal. And I couldn't attend. My wife handled it and spoke to a very nice, very sympathetic gentleman. But the answer we got was their hands are tied. That there's a formula that you plug in the numbers, how many bathrooms, where feet, whatever, spits out a number, and that's what it is. And if that's the case, if it is purely a numbers game, then my suggestion is to automate the process entirely and eliminate the appraiser's office to the extent possible, eliminate the appraisal staff. If it's purely a numbers game, if that's all it is, then automate it. Use AI and use the computers, contract with a private vendor's data entry at that point. And just truly automate the process, save Riley County money from payroll and benefits. But if, on the other hand, there is room for professional judgment and common sense, as I think there is in the appraiser's office, then the appraisal staff should take into account these other factors, look at the numbers, and then take into account these other factors that affect the value of the property when making that final determination. So that's my perspective. I may be wrong. If I misunderstand the process, I'm hoping to be educated, but thanks for letting me have my say.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Do you want any questions?
Thanks, thank you. What any other public comment this morning? I guess without fancy being here, we don't have to worry about executive sessions. I get used to this. Stay right there in that seat. Don't eat your panel. Okay, now I am not seeing anything. I don't see anybody up on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and move on to Commissioner comments. Sorry, Commissioner Kim.
Okay, Tuesday morning, I was on Kim's focus. The first half was discussing the budget process. He had a lot of questions, just kind of going over how the process works and everything. I hope we got some good information. We also talked a little bit about commercial management relating to the recent large fire in Westmoreland tornado and and what things were learned from there, you know, try to learn a little bit each time. Go forward. In the last segment was about short-term rentals and what's required to be licensed. The interesting segment in between there was someone called saying he wanted to talk about appraisal. He had a definite agenda and talked for five minutes without a break for answers. He said his house was appraised too high, but he appealed it was reduced. And I thought, well, that's what it's for. That's what the appeals are for. But then he went on. And also, he said, appraisals didn't go up as much when Greg was here, but now they've gone up the last few years. I said, it's the economy, you know? Then he went on. He had several untrue comments. I tried to respond with corrections to his statements. I can go into it later if somebody's more interested in, but there was a lot of stuff brought up that wasn't correct, and I tried to get it straightened out. But again, he was ran and finally had to cut him off to get him stopped. After it in focus with Flint Hills Veterans Meeting, kind of talked about scholarships coming up next year and also working on the Veterans Day Parade. The afternoon was the first planning meeting for the remodel of the ambulance station for emergency management fire. I don't want to over some ideas on what they want to do there, a couple of different options they're going to be looking at. Wednesday was the North Central Juvenile Meeting. Reviewed plans for the school year. The U S B four seventy-five has said they will not, they will teach the kids in detention, but not in secure care. One of the complaints was they messed up the graduation rates and some of the valuations by having those kids on their list. And they've done a lot of investigating, but evidently they can do that. They just don't count them when they do the counts. It's sort of, they don't count them. They don't do them. Right now, they're looking at this first place to talk was $200,000 to bring someone in to teach those kids. Right now, they're working on a version of a homeschool program. They could use that at least for the first year to try to figure, because we got, you know, get something going for next year and look into it to see what other funding is available, because even then it's going to cost the facility a lot of money. We also reviewed the funding formula for counties. It's based on a five-year average, and Riley County numbers have gone up last year or two. Ours have been pretty low, so there may be, probably going to be some adjustment on ours. And then we're to receive, I don't know if you guys got a letter from Gary County Commissioners about problems with the facility that someone has brought up. Yeah, after you guys looked at the letters, we can have a discussion on because a lot of the stuff they brought up isn't correct, but they're I'm not sure what the problem is with that, but there's, once you had read through the letter, I can go through some of the ideas, some of the stuff they brought up. Some of the stuff even in their letter conference is what they're saying, so. Like I say, once you guys read that letter, we can kind of go over that.
Okay, yeah, I received that email. I don't know if you.
Yeah, I did.
And it looked like it was sent to.
Sent to all the commissioners, all the commissioners that were, that represented all, you know, most ten or twelve counties of that.
Yeah, I think she used the list from K A C and just sent it to the first district because they had, they'd have it by district. I'm not to.
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be mailed to all the commissioners from all the districts.
The one I saw, that was the first district list. I thought maybe she sent it over separately, not for common reasons, so I don't know.
And we didn't discuss much because it said, she, they said they wanted to hit all the county, not just the representatives that are there, but everyone. Everyone knows what's going on. I will stir some things up.
I will say, just through my dialogue on the subject, this seems to be an issue throughout the state, not just this particular one either.
A lot of public lists aren't there.
Gotcha. Okay. I didn't respond yet, so.
You know, if you want to forward it to me, that way I can be sure Catherine sees it. I brought my copy of it.
You might want to see what she actually wrote.
Yeah.
So I'll send it over to you right now.
Yeah, I'll get it, sure. And that's all I got.
Okay. Commissioner Fokey.
Last week I had several early on church meetings. Had my HVAC system checked right for the summer. I don't know when that's going to come, but.
You can reach hope sooner than better. You can later. It can hold off.
A little wet.
It's getting up to ninety on Sundays, but I saw, so we're getting close soon.
Yeah, well, we got another big thunderstorm too, and all that's.
I'm starting to wonder if this is going to turn into nineteen, maybe.
I know.
Hope not.
I keep watching the creek behind my house. It's running pretty fast right this morning. It was really, so. Anyway, then I also did some personal financial business. Went to our final bell choir practice of the season last night, so I have one more performance. I have been going over requests from outside agencies and have some questions going forward for some of them. So I'm not sure what the process is to get them to answer.
Wait till we have them and ask. Just ask.
I don't have to go through any special. I've also been reviewing the consultant application, applicants for the planning department's comprehensive plan. So that's coming up, what, next week?
Yeah, it's Thursday.
And then meeting, meeting wise, Military Lynchon, which is normally held the first week, is tomorrow. So I'm going to that tomorrow.
Plan on going to that too.
That's all I have.
Okay, mine's pretty much short and sweet. It's been a long week, but mostly, mostly work related. Last night, we did have a meeting of the Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization over at the Public Library. Had a couple of short welcomes, public comment section. There was nobody there for that, but I had a financial update and a monthly statement, balance updates of staff. Staff also gave updates on the E V readiness plan, TA letters of support, and the U S twenty-four corridor management plan study. There'll be a comprehensive update on that during June's City County County meeting, so I won't go into depth on that. A dot provided its normal updates on projects and grant opportunities. Talked a little bit about the projects up on thirteen and one thirteen and Set Child's Corridor there, and then eighteen and seventy. That's coming up next, so just start putting that on your radar there, too. Talked about the Transportation Emissions Reduction Strategy Plan, or TERs as we're calling it. We approved the minutes from last meeting, which was in March. An update to amendment number three of the Unified Planning Work Program. Some other action included local match estimates that will come in July. Ours will be down, up just a little bit. There's a reason for that. Has to do with there's a federal funding mechanism or something, if one of the plans that has to be updated and it was off just a little bit, but it was like a $15 difference, so it's not much. Then we jumped into talking about a health and all policy resolution that will go into effect for the N P O, so they'll use that to make some decision processes when making some policy and decisions on transportation-related subjects. Local invoice, yeah, I already mentioned that. Got something up on July first. Talked about the twenty twenty-five even unified work program and the local match estimates for next year. Those are going to be down quite considerably, about five, six hundred bucks for us. But he already gave us that presentation, so it's in line with that. TA grant history, that, what is those letters of support I already mentioned? Talking about some other policy board agendas. And we decided that they're going to go virtual. We're going to remove the office space that they have, the equipped paying rent. They'll have to have some storage. But and if they need some meeting room, they'll use some of the spaces that are available, ATA, and maybe use our conference room from time to time if need be, if they, you know, so. If they need to actually have a work type of meeting, but most of everything else they can do, they can do at home or by virtual means, so it'll save about five grand a year and keep that local match now. And then this morning, I attended Good Morning Manhattan at Four Points Sheraton, hosted by the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Program was an area-state legislative panel for a recap of the twenty twenty-four legislative session and a possible special session that we think is coming. Senator Bouchereddy, House Representative Sidney Carlin, Mike Dodson, and Kenny Titus were there in attendance. A pretty good crowd, pretty good breakfast, and thanks for Olson and Associates for sponsoring the event. And last thing, I don't know if anybody else received this, but I got a very interesting text message the other night. And that's not a local group, I don't think. I don't know if they even have their facts straight on this, but it's an anti-tax group.
Oh, the, kind of the pool.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that.
I know, but they listed it as recreation and fitness, and I'm thinking, that's not what really this is. So if you're going to send that out, you should send it at least with the right information and talk about aquatics and what it actually is instead of what actually not, or you're really not helping your cause for better or for worse on that, but I guess it just lets you know that people are paying attention both sides of that, so.
Yeah, and they talked about it when Kim.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
They did.
They said that they tried to return phone calls and that there, nobody's there to answer.
Well, on the deal there, it does have a paid for by, which leads me to believe that there is a political action committee that's been put together. So you could probably go to the State Ethics Committee and try to figure out who and what it is.
Yeah.
I don't have time to do all that. I just thought it was interesting. They sent it here, and it wasn't, like I said, it's not fitness or recreation related. I just thought that was kind of, kind of interesting.
Just talked about taxes.
Yeah. And maybe that's the broader point, so, yeah, fair enough. And with that, that's all I've got this morning.
Ready for business, commissioners?
Yes.
First, I need a motion to approve highway use permit granting Cox Communications permission to replace two hundred and eighty-eight feet of defective cable with point six-two-five C I C liquid drive according to details from Routch.
I have a duty to approve highway use permit, granting Cox Communications permission to complete the work as outlined.
I would second that.
Thanks.
Been moved and seconded to approve the highway use permit granting Cox Communications permission to complete work outlined in the permit. All in favor?
Chair, please sign.
Next, I need a motion to accept Dwayne Sherwood's resignation and appoint Eric Duska as Manhattan Township Trustee.
Okay, I would make a motion to accept Dwayne Sherwood's resignation and appoint Eric Duska as Manhattan Township Trustee.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept Dwayne Sherwood's resignation and appoint Eric Duska as Manhattan Township Trustee. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I need a motion for the tax rule correction.
I'd be just boozy tax.
I would second that.
Okay, been moved and seconded. You've signed the tax rule correction. All in favor?
Chair, please sign. Next, I have Riley County Employee Action Forms. Ken Lamb, Public Works Operator Two, Public Works Separation Service. Michael Huffman for promotions, Solid Waste Operator Two in the Public Works Department. And Krista Dix, new hire Appraiser One, Commercial in the Appraiser's Office. All three sign, please.
Commissioner, need a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve payroll and accounts payable.
Second.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded to approve payroll and accounts payable. All in favor?
All three sign, please.
You, last item to add to the business meeting, Mr. Homing, which is junior commissioners, it's a letter that he's drafted, which you all have a copy there to send to Clay County, if you're so inclined requesting that they consider sharing the funding for community correction across services in Clay County. Let the commissioners know we looked for a joint resolution. There's, there's a resolution, and there's one resolution that's very vague. There isn't a local agreement between the two that says we will provide the services with the funding the state provides. The whole issue is now the state isn't providing full funding, and so just so you know, those issues may come up, but at least, you know, this is something that gets the discussion on the table anyway, and staff, staff has worked on this all week to get this prepared for the commissioners, and if you're ready to proceed, I do have originals here for you to sign if you're so inclined to make a motion.
I do have a question, though. There isn't any amount given for their their input. Thirty-seven is what we pay, isn't it?
That's what we're paying on behalf of them. That's what we're saying.
Oh, okay. All right, I didn't.
We don't expect them to pay the entire cost. I mean, the state is paying for some of it, and so this is the additional cost that Riley County is currently absorbing that really should be their responsibility.
Correct.
So we're asking them to. Okay, I didn't.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, me too.
Times of the essence, because obviously that meeting is on Monday. I got your voice back, too.
I make a motion to sign the letter to Clay County Department of Community Corrections.
I would second that.
It's been moved and seconded to sign the letter. Letter for community corrections and support for Clay County. All in favor?
Aye.
So Megan is your.
My husband was annoyed with the question.
What you're saying is it still didn't stop you.
So eloquent input there. I bet you sleep on the couch a lot now, do you, Rich?
Me?
Yeah.
I'm working on thirty-five years' change.
On the couch?
I was fixing to say it.
Exactly.
Are you trying to acclimate me for the summer with your control of summer status share or what?
No, not at all.
He's got a toastie.
It's awfully humid, the dew point and humidity are all up, but.
That's why air conditioning was invented.
Funny story about that.
So it's, so I could take while the heat working on things while we get the air conditioning.
For me, I'm getting to that age where it just takes a long time to acclimate, doesn't matter what it is.
I was out. My hair was like this, it's just curls and waves and.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you for everybody's work on that too, I know that was a short turnaround, but hopefully it pays dividends.
I just read it too fast.
County officials luncheon commissioners is tentatively scheduled for June tenth on a Monday.
Yes.
If, asking if the commissioners want to have it, and if you do want to have it, what's the topic?
We were gonna plan for that, because that's the quarterly.
That's what I thought.
I think it'd be a continuation of previous discussion and budget.
So budget, June tenth. Budget, anything else commissioners? Okay.
And Bryant, you're up next.
Thank you. Frank Parker, Deputy County Counselor, um, and as it's my fourth day on the job, I have very few comments, except, um, I wouldn't like to say, uh, how much I've appreciated getting to meet, uh, all the members of staff that I've been blessed to meet, this is, I already determined this is an amazing place, uh, to work, uh, and I've, uh, people have just been so warm and welcoming me, and, uh, I'm fortunate that I'm already working on several projects, including, I can confirm that Clancy has been successful starting to integrate me into that tax foreclosure process instead of, right, that I found out on day one that I'm gonna get involved with, he, he's been true to his promise, so, um.
If I'm not mistaken, that's just right, that sale's just right around the corner, isn't it?
You know, it is, but, uh, I, like, there's many things in this job that, uh, staff that have be, that have become so well put together with staff, right, that it just, and I give all the credit to Jana and, and, uh, Shannon in my office and my predecessors, um, I, I'm not happy to do hardly anything. So it's, it's fantastic, and, uh, uh, I just, I look forward to working with all of you, um, and, you know, as always, if there's anything I can ever do, this time of Clancy's, uh, well-deserved, a little bit of respite, just come by and let me know.
He went to Vegas, didn't he?
Apartments, they're gonna live in apartment for a year to kind of figure out where where they can find a house that's affordable and livable, because that's an issue there.
Oh, yeah.
Everywhere.
I bet they end up moving out to Henderson or someplace on the outskirts, I bet.
It's, you know, as a respect for peer, moving here to there, I used to experience it, but a cousin was living in San Francisco, and he moved to Vegas because it was so much.
But a bargain.
Yeah. It was, that's what he said.
All right, it's the same way, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll move out here.
Any changes in the minutes commissioners?
I didn't see. See, it's my turn. Okay, I may make a motion to approve, um, the minutes from, um, five, uh, May thirteenth of the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the Riley County Commission being dated May thirteenth as written, all in favor?
Aye.
A tentative agenda, so commissioners?
Tentative again. Shorter.
Little shorter.
Any items for next week's press conference?
I might surprise you one of these days, but I've been saying it for five years now, so give up.
Next commissioners, you have Julie Gibbs at nine fifty.
Big news on the K State football front again, huh? Wow.
Need that.
Yeah.
That's key.
Really did.
Because.
Hard to expect that Avery's gonna stay.
Most people get dinged up for a few plays at least, you know, so.
That is a pretty good iteration in our office.
I don't know, I didn't, I haven't really got to see much specifics on it, but.
Well, he was a four-star guy in the nineteen class and ranked anywhere from eight to tenth in the quarterback class. Signed originally with Penn State and injuries, isn't it? Injuries, it's bad. He tore ACL in twenty-two, had a knee problem in twenty, but there was other problems going on in twenty, so maybe it wasn't the knee, I don't know. Run upstairs, grab supplies, I didn't, I didn't, I just came right over from breakfast, so. So did we.
Oh, Shannon has a, oh, her high school graduate this year.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Good Riley County has a motion.
I didn't know that either, I didn't know that either. Gonna go to a graduation party in Lebanon tomorrow.
Lebanon, huh?
No, actually Kansas City, but there's some aunt that lives in Lebanon, and that's kind of a meeting point for family and friends, and so. Yeah, that's where I'm heading tomorrow.
Have breakfast over at the Union Train Station, they like that.
Oh, each restaurant, I mean, maybe that is, that is what it was, but I've been in several different times. With the general one, and then it was an Mexican restaurant for a while.
I, I think last time I ate there was maybe thirteen or fourteen, so maybe it's changed.
Yeah, I don't know.
Since I had good breakfast, so, order side of pancakes and it's a meal. The plate size, I was like, whoa, wait a minute, that's exactly what I wanted.
And I talked again, I heard, listened to it, he tried to.
Make sense of it, well.
Not gonna say it publicly, but. Kept thinking it was about done, and just kept going, kept going.
They do a pretty good job of.
I looked at it, because I started, I continued going on, so I started making notes, he said this, this, because I could respond to all this, because he was, he was firing away stuff.
He just wanted to vent, is what it sounded like, sounds like to me.
Angry.
The way he said, yeah, houses weren't going up before. Before, but now you're getting crazier than houses, houses prices are going up faster, I went. Yeah, they are. It is because it's here.
Be glad you're not in like places in Iowa or Pennsylvania where they went up twenty-five, thirty percent in one year.
Oh.
Of several counties without, but that, that's insane, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's insane, I mean, I do see Ron's point, you know, I mean, the appraisal process in Kansas is a little antiquated because it's thirty-five years old.
There isn't anything, uh, forming, but there is.
Yeah. I worry that that's gonna get stretched out so much that they're gonna that scrap the, the whole thing and then try to re-samper it with some, yeah, instead of maybe making some, some maybe vital incremental changes to the process that might modernize that a little bit to real time, and just scrap it, start all over, and that's just, that's just not, not what we need.
What's, my question that I submitted this morning said the last tax bill had the dark, the legitimizing dark story and, uh, adding the competition, I said, and do you favor that? And, and because if, if businesses pay last taxes, that puts more tax burden on.
And that, I talked to, I talked to Representative Titus about that, and he wasn't, he thought the same thing, that they, they needed to debate all the issues, but they really needed to take those out, because if you give us, then you're just gonna take us, you know, basically, so, yeah.
Well, I think a se- special session is gonna be involved.
Yeah. But she hasn't actually vetoed it, and I thought it was past the time that you could do that, but.
No, shit, I saw that, that's all, too, but it wasn't, because it was so late in the, you know.
Well, she's obviously gonna wait till the very last moment, but yes, there it is.
Well, I have a friend over there in the office, it sounds pretty likely.
I don't think they're, I, I, I think Representative Dodson and Titus are right, I don't think they're gonna accomplish anything, I don't think they're gonna budge on that, on that bracket.
But, and they didn't bring it too much for this, saying it was thirty million dollars a year difference in a twelve-billion-dollar budget.
Yeah, no.
Talking about three or four years from now, you have no idea, that's, that's rounding error. Again, Dodson didn't say what he's doing.
No. Well, I, yeah, I don't know. Still got time, still got three weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Third.
Oh, yeah, for those in June, okay, yeah, that's.
That was the first Monday in June.
Yeah.
I wanna ask a question I'm interested in, what's the city gonna do?
Yeah.
About, oh, the big issue?
Yeah.
Well, I think the inaction to this point pretty much says what they're gonna have to do.
Fair enough. This has been an off until the meeting next week, you know, they were gonna do something, you'd call a special meeting.
Right, exactly. Let them know their options on our part.
So we can do.
And you did not hear a word back.
I did. Appreciate comments and addition to this letter that she sent out.
Yeah, she put it in that email. Send it over to Greg too, you know.
Yeah, I, she had comments too, she handed it out, was great, and wanted to discuss it.
I didn't tell her.
It wasn't addressed to the board, it was addressed to all commissioners, and we'll review and see what everybody thinks, but it's.
You know, I will say, you know, E C F has been, that's been a challenging department for decades, even back when it was S R S, I mean, it's not anything against anybody that specifically works there, it's just processes, you know, but um, it's not, it's not really.
No, that's where we love, we're also, yes, we're, yeah, it's like, so.
Yeah, it's, it's just been that way.
Oh, really? When was that?
But it was like, they were hiding information.
Five miles.
Your creek might be coming up.
Stay in it, you know, state facilities, you know, state offices, you know, it's crazy.
Yeah. You know, supposedly in the state, personally.
Yeah, that's, that's for sure. But I mean, yeah, I, I only got half an inch last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I got, yeah. But it was, some heavy coming down, because, well, Tim Sharpe had called me there. Uh, along Keats Road, just, just passed, it washed out gravel, lost the tone.
They may, may have.
They were saying, I gotta be, be, yeah, far more, they said they got through the inches last night.
Well, look, because it was, and I came in, and I called John, and there was a bunch there, but by the time a bunch of traffic got through, it was kind of cleared it up, but you could see there was quite a bit of gravel in front of us, but once it slowed down towards Keats Road.
I wish, I wish I'd have got that.
No, I guess, I was, I wanted to work, because I, I'm like five miles away, you know, I gotta have, so I don't know, if there was storm was just.
These storms, like, this year, too, been real spots.
They're a little spotty.
Yeah. Members, we got, since first April, we've had almost eight inches, just the same.
Yeah, I haven't done a good job keeping track in total, but I'd imagine it's around that.
I had like two inches the other day, then.
And you say we're in a rainstorm for the next couple of weeks.
Oh. Well, it's fine.
Art's popping up pretty good, it likes.
Good thing, because you can't get in to do anything right now.
I can't, but unfortunately weeds are probably growing, just to say.
That's the problem you're gonna run into, then you can't even get in to get the weeds.
Yeah, that's one of the problems in my back. Down by the creek, there's all this stuff, you wanna get out there, it's too muddy, you need to walk out there. Well, I could, if we don't talk about it, probably make a backup. The grass is still in the next time.
Yeah. That's the other problem, finding a spot where you have the time to mow when it's not wet.
Yeah, last time we mowed, we jumped, we barely dried that, but we had to get out there before the next day.
Yeah, me too, so.
My Sunday job, and it's gonna be way higher by then.
It didn't like Friday.
I said, you better get it done early, because there's another chance.
She usually does, she's been having a heck of a time, it's allergies this year, she's going into an allergist, causing her face to swell up really bad and stuff, so we gotta figure out what's going on.
Yeah.
We got, you know, when I mow, when I get back here.
Yeah, she's never had this. She's never had this before, it's really odd.
That's why this cord keeps getting flooded.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, and it sticks this way.
Oh, man, just.
At the top of it, or, or, that's excluded bathroom floor, I feel, and you should do it. Especially on long days.
Right, sometimes it's just.
Oh, yeah.
Good morning, more than that.
Yeah.
Morning.
How are you doing too?
Good.
See, we've got new ones too.
What's that?
I said, we've got a new one here too.
I see that. I actually, he was at the meeting of the department meeting yesterday, so. But my understanding was that Clancy wasn't really giving him very long.
That's the reading yesterday, is that right, Ben or not, because you're bad.
I know, I, I was surprised to be still with the organization as of today, because I heard it was, I heard yesterday afternoon was like time to pack up my stuff.
Yeah.
Which was nice, that I hadn't brought, you know, I still hadn't had enough time to bring all my stuff, so, but all worth it, but he, he decided that he's gonna wait till after the vacation.
Okay, and tell me your name.
I'm Brian Parker.
Brian?
Uh-huh, Brian.
Brian Parker, okay.
There's a T on the end of it, I don't know why.
Okay.
And a Y in there too, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So part of my deal, I know this is informal and we're in between, but this is Ethan Sylvester, our new ag agent.
Yes.
And, uh, Commissioner Foke just walked out, but Rich Barlow is our county clerk.
Ethan.
Barry's Kinley, county commissioner, John Ford, county commissioner, and Catherine Foke.
He's taking over the weight, taking over for Greg?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Part of Kansas, you're from Ethan. Well, we go. Long way away. How'd you find it here? With twenty-four having all the, all the construction and everything going on and. Oh. Welcome, boards.
We can always take the rural route and go down ninety-nine and come up that way and.
That's the scenic route, actually, I like taking that one.
I do too.
That's great, but he lives up at University Park now.
Okay, okay, good deal.
Yeah.
Still didn't stray too far away from, uh, from twenty-four though.
No, nearly didn't.
At least you avoid that crazy drive. At least you avoid that crazy drive.
It's getting worser.
Worser?
Worser by the year of now.
But you're an extension and not grammar.
That's the word for my uncle using say that.
Worser.
Oh.
Okay, we are at nine fifty, so we need a motion to start.
Moved recesses the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health.
I was seconded.
All right, it's moved to second to recesses the Board of County Commission, reconvene as the Board of County Health. All in favor?
Right, morning. Julie gives her the health department. I'm joined by Shelley Schaller. She is our current Chair of the Public Health Advisory Council. And so we have before you the revisions to our bylaws. It's been two years since we revised these. So you have the twenty twenty-two is what I just passed to you, passed out to you. I wanted you just to have these for reference. Um, and then in the packet is the revisions. So I've also included in the discussion what we've changed in these bylaws. Um, basically, our update was to make them not only more informative, but also to ensure we had more flexibility as a board. And that we have clear procedures to follow. So we just felt like they flowed a little bit more. Um, so some of the things that we changed, Article Two is now council members. Um, composition includes more details about how our representation on the board. Um, under appointment, more details about how members are appointed. Article Three is now organizational structure. Um, officers are now elected at the last meeting of the year instead of the first, so they can just get right into it at the first of the year. Article Four is now procedural rules to include more information on how the bylaws are amended. We've also added parliamentary authority to the rules since we do follow parliamentary procedure with our meetings. And conflict of interest was restructured to allow for members to disclose any conflict and recuse themselves of voting. So in the uh previous, the twenty twenty-two revisions, we had a conflict of interest as if you're a member of the same family. You cannot be on the board. So basically only one person on the board at a time. We decided that, um, we actually ran into that issue with some of our boards and we would exclude then some really good potential members. And so therefore now, um, we're gonna take it on a case by case basis. So anything that we're voting on, they need to disclose that conflict of interest and recuse themselves of voting. They can still be on the same board, but it just comes down to what we're voting on. And that includes all of our revisions. Any questions?
I think this is the second time we've amended these since I've been here.
Yeah. I don't have any question. Then I would make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four Public Health Advisory Board bylaws.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty-four. Um, Raleigh County Public Health Advisory Board bylaws. Um, all, all in favor?
Chair, please sign.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Next commissioner, you have Gary Pike at ten o'clock. You got your rain last night, Gary? What's that? Did you get rain last night?
Another thirty-five hundred, yes. I checked one. I checked one on Monday and it was nine inches. It's like, whoa, it only goes up to four, so I was hoping I was stopping that. I know I was talking about, I think since the twenty-second. We've got about six and a half inches of our place, which is much, it was much needed.
Oh, yeah.
Much needed.
Sadly, that's probably all we'll get for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I be.
That's better than we've had the last.
Oh, yeah.
Agree, that's true.
Agree, one hundred percent.
Rain at University Park?
Oh, yeah.
You live just north of me. I live further down on Frog Collar, Blue River Hills area, kind of.
Okay.
So you're just north of me.
All right, did you uh, did you experience that pretty bad hailstorm?
You know, we, we had hail. We were going to bed, you know, there was talking about the big stuff coming and. Just laid in bed and heard boom, oh no, here it comes. And went out and looked at the back porch. You had. One about, you know, a little bit bigger in size of a quarter. The rest was about pea size. We were afraid we were gonna get it, but yeah, we did get a lot of big stuffs.
They were saying it was supposed to be pretty bad. We're thankful that we only had hail. It was about pea sized.
Mm-hmm, yeah, there was a few intermittent big ones, but yeah.
That's the part of seeing around. I didn't buy, I don't like the hail. In sand tornadoes, I, you can maneuver around, but you can't maneuver in and out of hail. You just can't do it.
How long you live at University Park?
It's about October.
Oh, okay.
Very long. Long enough to experience the uh threat of the fire and the tornado and then the hail. So we'll have the earthquakes next and then the plague.
There's a volcano in the midst of that too. There's a volcano line up there. I don't know if it's active or not.
Every once in a while, there's a tsunami that comes from away.
Isn't that what Mount Mitchell is? Is a volcano actually just waiting to erupt and everybody? Where you belong? I don't know. I hope not.
You'll just be well versed in all of, all of the new chance to offer. It's okay.
I haven't seen that volcano.
Well, we've already had the plague, so you know. In University Park, but we've already gone through that one.
It sounds like you're the reason we're getting all this weather.
Yeah.
Taking the rain. I have no issues with that. I have no issues with that.
Yeah, we've been so dry.
That was down Saturday to Saint Joseph's Church during that headstone cleaning event. At those headstones look nice now. They have an open house on the twenty-fifth. I'm going to check it out.
Oh, down, down south area.
No, it's just an open house at the, at the church itself.
Oh, okay.
They're trying to still raise funds to clean.
Finished that.
They're getting, what are Saint Joseph's?
It's on Lower McDowell Creek.
Oh, okay.
Line, almost, almost.
Yeah, I agree.
Line.
It's literally just kind of floating right there. I mean, I, just a little north of I seventy, there's, you can kind of tell where the two roofs kind of changes where it's at.
Yeah.
Is there uh? Does there should go an active church there?
It's just kind of a community space. I mean, the church is there. My uh. Great, great, great grandfather helped build it. So I've got three generations of family buried there.
So what year was it?
Nineteen teens. The original one was, I think, eighteen eighty-seven. Foundation is still there and then they built a seven church on top of it, the one that's there now. Um, they had mass and stuff there all the way up until nineteen eighty-nine, but. The roof just made it impossible to do.
Yeah.
Um, so they closed it and took all the windows, stained glass and everything out of it and, you know. I don't remember what year, two thousand six or two thousand eight, but. Storico Museum took it over, but then the society, you know, been trying to piece it back together. Community space for that neighborhood down there. It's larger than you think.
Are there any artifacts somehow like crease fixes or statues?
They took it all out, um, when everything closed in the nineties. Um, there were some of the original stained glass. Was in a church over Maple Hill, I think. And uh, some of the other families, including mine, have, have gotten bits and pieces of the rest of it. I'm trying to figure out what the, they had a really beautiful organ. In there and I don't know where that, where that ended up at, but some.
Our organ at Saint Joseph's at Flush is out for repairs now and I was on the very council. We started talking about that and that original organ was purchased from a company in Lawrence in nineteen sixty-six. And put in place and now it's in three thirty-five or eight years later, whatever.
It lasts.
Lasted pretty good, yeah.
Well, it is ten AM, so. Ready to go.
Oh, okay.
You can keep talking about organs. I don't mind, but you just.
Um, so part of the.
Yeah, we do. We got one of those things.
No, this isn't the extension one.
Yeah, I would make a motion to recess as the Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to recess as the Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good catch.
Yeah.
Now we're official.
Okay, so uh Commissioner Foke, you were just out of the room when I introduced Ethan Sylvester as our new agriculture agent. He started on Monday. We've already been tagging sheep and goats a couple evenings and we got wheat plot tour tonight, so. Going right away and trying to get him. He is a former foreager, so he's familiar with a lot of that and he'll be doing a lot of the forest livestock work and stuff. So we'll be getting him oriented in that, in that manner. So we're glad to have him on board. Good, good young guy, so thank you. Uh, and I guess I'm here to present the Riley County Fair budget, which. When you, when we boil it all down, I'm not asking, uh, the Fair Board, I should say, isn't asking for any more money for twenty twenty-five. I think we got an increase uh a couple of years ago and the, I changed some lot. Like what, you know, the status was on building improvements. I did shift more money down in capital outlay for building improvements. Did, otherwise we'll use them for other uh blind items, because I've, I've cut back on some of those things like fair supplies and. Things like that. We are gonna save a little bit of money on uh custodial services, other contract services this year. Because we're, we're changing providers in that area. We have not, and I have not looked for fair security. Last year was the first year I did not hire additional fair security and last year we had a problem. We've never had a problem before. We had a big problem last year. And we're still addressing that with RCPD and one of our Fair Board members was gonna visit with um. Brian Pete about that again this year because our, the security we've hired in the past, as you know, just wears security T-shirts. Kind of roams the grounds. They, they're not armed. They just report stuff to the police. And uh, but they have encouraged us to go ahead and hire them. I'm unsure what we're gonna do in that area because. Uh, quite honestly, the ones we've had in the past, probably, especially the last year we had. Ineffective, um, so I don't wanna waste money on that. But anyway, the. Ask from the county, we spent ten hundred, ten thousand, one seventy. We're asking for a hundred, ten thousand, five hundred, which was what we asked for last year. So it's a little bit, little bit we did spend last year, so. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to entertain them.
Wonder this is the one we have ten days or something to.
No. This is Fair Board, yeah. Thank you. Any, any questions? Okay.
Uh, well, note that Ethan's already better at bringing rain than that McClure guy was.
I know. Well, I thought it'd be great to introduce him to you, so.
Oh, that reminds me, you have to keep Kahol ice cream and pops off.
Yeah.
That was something great, dude. You have to.
Oh, he hasn't got the steak lesson yet, huh? He's not even aware I.
No, he's not even aware. There's a, I tell him stuff as.
Those are two need to know, so yeah, make sure.
Remember steak.
Come to the wheat plot tour tonight, you'll get Kahol ice cream. So.
Remember steak, Kahol ice cream and pies. That's all you got or nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Nice to meet you, Ethan.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Next commissioner, Christine Minnie at ten fifteen, Christine. How you ladies doing?
Good, how are you all?
Good.
Oh, I didn't really get back a little bit of the one, but if, let's just do one.
Well, sometimes they're running. Let's do one. Sometimes they're running.
All right. I'm, I may actually send you a calendar or anybody, just because I try to keep the calendar electronic.
Oh, good, okay. I don't look at that, but.
Really, oh, it. I love, I love that. I just got used to it because now it dings at me.
Right.
And I try to, I try to go off memory, but yesterday I learned to follow it. Because I was on, I was early for, I understand the, the city county meeting's been canceled. I was early for it. Fifteen minutes, so I'm like, I need to go off the electronic. I just go off my minds.
Well, I always write. I have my trusted day planner.
Those are great.
If I lose this, I'm in real trouble. I'll say it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess I probably should check with you to see which office you're in.
Oh, yes, absolutely. But I can, I'll, right, rather different. I'll be over here and if it's. If it's all kinds of havoc upstairs, we'll just come down into yours if we need to.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll just be here.
Okay. Yeah, the noise doesn't get down this far. You can hear, you can feel it.
Email. Claiming about a regulation, so we're putting in things for. Regulation. Lots of something on Facebook or some, some. Going on.
And something new every day.
Must be some other.
Maybe it was a different district or something. There's nothing, you don't have regulation, it's for like ham radio. Have any rules, have any proposed rules? Things get like this. Soon as Riley, we had. Eighteen people show up, all upset about a new rule, we're gonna say not allowing false starts on the streets in town, and we was.
Well, I'd get rid of about half the traffic with it.
Nobody said, it's, it's never even been brought up. You know, somebody starts, somebody start.
Somebody starts a rumor.
But and we really start golf carts, mostly it's four wheelers.
Yeah.
People running around town and, and. As long as you're obeying traffic. And that was part of all, said some kids running on. They said, and you have to, you have to, you have to have a driver's license to go on the street. But nobody ever even considered it, but a group had somehow had gotten it started and gotten everybody wound up.
What happened with this one?
There is a small town up north or something where, you know, some police department arrested some guy, one of them, because he was intoxicated. Of course, he got a DUI from his motorized, but he tried to fight that it wasn't a car, so people didn't count. And then went to court and there was a whole big deal about it.
They call an email, tell them, oh, why we shouldn't be dealing with any of these regulations in place. I called them in and she was. Relax, yeah, but it's someplace. Someplace. Somebody heard about it and then they got, and all of a sudden somebody decided it's in Riley County.
Yeah, might have been a, you know, bigger place in Kansas or something.
And, yes, what the. Only regulation here is if you're close to Fort, they have to rules that this household, like somebody, you mean that's the cost.
I never saw anybody that Latin guy who slept from, you know, golf twins. They drive golf cart, carts down, a little kit in the area. I wish they'd warn you, you know, if you're walking on a trail, say in Annburg Park, they don't warn you like. You know, all of a sudden you. Scaring you to death.
They like Gander said that, you know. Teach everyone that's there. If they know it, and it is pretty. But there's curves and hills.
Oh, yeah.
And there's, there's going on there and stuff.
Well, you probably don't stay out.
It just, it didn't, well, there isn't any shoulder.
No shoulder.
Yeah, so.
No, there never is. Plus, standing just a lot of shoulders. We have these.
Well, there's some, but not enough.
Not enough to.
We play going into that right, you stroked and I'm not saying joking, I wasn't good for this, that's sake. So I don't know why there aren't more. Especially this time of year, spring, it really likes.
No, I like to get out.
And it is a nice. The hill around the corner.
How's the new ride?
Very nice.
What'd you get? What'd you get?
Challenger. Challenger, yeah, it's out there.
I didn't see it.
Last one did that.
Did Jane do anyone too?
No, she hadn't said what she wants.
Being taken some time, huh?
Thought she wants. She drove, she drove one, didn't like it, so.
There's all different. Every brand has one that size, you know, to try out. Popular size.
Pika tomorrow. She's got a friend, friend, just. For a brother, but now he sells them. Pika, so she's sent him back, we want this price range. Meanwhile, yes. That she's, besides, she wants to ask you, be here just to sit down sometime, which. But I found what I want, so I got that first. And now she's driving the last thing.
Do you get a convertible? No, no.
She noises.
I've never been a convertible fan.
Well, and it sounds, there's about four days in Kansas when it's not too cold or too hot to.
It's okay, California.
In the summer, I can't hit it down.
There's just nothing that's ever appealed to me about a convertible.
I mean, it is, there's six days in spring and fall, but it has been fun to drive.
Look for a Jeep around the lake or something. I can see it, but you know, for something on the highway.
Yeah.
Highway drivers can be noisy enough, let alone.
You just gotta crank the radio up. That's why you're gonna. So black.
My age, I gotta crank it up enough already.
Listen.
Had a little laughing too hard there, Brittany.
I know who my boss is.
Brother had sent me a note saying, I see tickets in your future. And I said, no, I did have a challenge, not a Hellcat. I was running my engines yesterday and so much quieter and smoother than last thing. I went, oh, I look down.
All of those, all those Challenger models, they're all that young power.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's got plenty.
Get you a ticket.
It didn't, it didn't have the, what is it, seven hundred horsepower of Hellcat.
All right, I guess we're going to talk about cars and. Christine.
Okay, we're talking about cars. That's awesome. Um, okay. Well, good morning and thank you for this opportunity. Uh, my name is Christine Benny. I'm the president of the Flint Hills Veterans Coalition. With me is Christian Bishop. As you all know, she's the Military Relations Manager at the Chamber and she is also our Secretary and Fort Riley Liaison. Um, I've been a member of the Veterans Coalition for almost ten years. I've enjoyed working with the local veterans and community members each year to put on the best parade in Beaconsis.
Amen.
This year will be the thirty second year of the Veterans Parade. Um, just a little bit about last year. Last year's parade consists of sixty eight organizations, veterans organizations, over five hundred adults and a thousand and one hundred and sixty children from our local schools. Of course, Fort Riley was a big hit each year with the CG's mounted color guard and the First Infantry Division Band and the, um, the command team from the division headquarters. The coalition was able to provide video coverage through the local Channel Three city station. I think that's the right channel, right, Channel Three?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Through, uh, Channel Three. So many of our local communities like nursing homes and those who cannot attend for various reasons. We are thankful to the city of Manhattan for the use of Peace Memorial Auditorium for the indoor ceremony where over a hundred people attend and was in live streamed on K Man Radio. We want to thank our K State University ROTC cadets that help each year with the lining up of the parade entrance in the marshalling area at the mall. And we're also thankful for the cooperation of the Riley County Police Department and their help with road closures and security of the uh, parade assembly site at the mall and throughout the parade route. We also work with the American Legion and the local Knights of Columbus to put on the Veterans Day Breakfast. Last year, we provided breakfast for over five hundred veterans and community members. We continue to serve more and more veterans each year. Of course, the community is welcome to have delicious biscuits and gravy.
They are.
Yes, they are. Um, for a five dollar or more donation. We also are thankful for the donations from Longhorns to provide lunch for all our veteran volunteers a week after, I'm sorry. To provide lunch to all our volunteers a week or so after the parade for our A A R meeting. This year, the Veterans Day Parade will be on Veterans Day, Monday, November eleventh. The theme is Veterans Helping Veterans, celebrating the hundred and twenty fifth anniversary of the VFW and the hundred and fifth anniversary of the American Legion. And as you would expect, our grand marshals will be our own VFW and American Legion commanders. While the parade is a big part of the Veterans Coalition, we are ever expanding our reach to ensure we are supporting our veterans in the area. Some of the programming includes working with the nursing homes in the area and providing veteran information. Right now, we are working with Met, Metallark on their veteran program they have on site. We also provide an audio tour of the military sites here in Manhattan and hope to add more from around the Flint Hills, Flint Hills region. We are also working with Flag Day organization to increase awareness of Flag Day, which is June fourteenth. We work with the Riley County Historical Society with the cemetery cleanup of the military headstones. We also continue to provide scholarships for veterans at Kansas State University, the Manhattan Area Technical College and Manhattan Christian College. Within the past year, we have been able to provide over, provide six one thousand dollar scholarships. And we are very excited to be able to provide this opportunity for our veterans students each year. We have appreciated Commissioner McKinley's help with the street barricades and, and attending the meetings. With the Riley County support, we continue to be able to provide veterans in our community a memorial that is right outside the courthouse and parade each year to recognize the military service of all members and to the community as a whole. So I think we have, um, up there a request for a thousand dollars and that hasn't changed. Um, I don't think that's changed for quite some time. So that would be our request. So if you have any questions? No, okay. Thank you, James.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Have a new weekend.
Next commissioner, do you have a rip me up at ten thirty? Like some sun out there.
Yeah. Not always good with high humidity in New York, though. It'll get hot next couple of days.
Which could bring more.
Let's get it over with, you know, after the hot, you know, it comes, right? Football season.
And also. Yeah, I'm interested in this year's football season.
New teams and.
We have an offensive line. We could have a very dynamic offense. And if we have two receivers that can catch the ball. We can have a very.
I think we've got all of us.
We've struggled with, what I don't get is every Big Twelve team you play, they always have one stud receiver.
We've got a pretty good rapport with Jace Brown and Avery.
Yeah, Jace.
Yeah. Can you get Keegan Johnson or somebody else to just kind of help offset a little bit? Heard pretty good stuff out of the, the next Lockett coming up through Sterling.
Is he coming along?
Yes, what I'm hearing.
Is he what, junior now?
I think he's a sophomore.
Sophomore.
Red shirt, fresh.
Yeah.
Got somebody to replace tight end.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was solid.
And then we, yeah, we got another transfer that came in too. Um, thinking they might, he's got a red shirt. They're thinking they might reach, you know, might be part of the, part of the rotation next year. Um, topping up this Trey Spidey kid too. I've heard the name, number twelve. It might be one of those where we don't have a like a solid number, number one, you know? Like a thousand yard receiver guy, but you know, I think Jace Brown's going to be that guy and then maybe a three, four guys.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that'll be key.
So, yeah.
He's keeping guessing what he's.
Out of the backfield. It'll be the, they're hoping the scrolls effect.
Uh, yeah.
Or the Vaughn effect.
I think.
Vaughn, Vaughn effect. That's what I was real meant to say.
But also if you turn, kick the hundred.
I think they're going to use them as many ways as they can. That would treat this way.
What year is it?
Twenty two. So it had never been sold.
Really?
It had more than five thousand miles.
So you probably got a pretty good deal.
Yeah. They said it was one that came in late, twenty two, twenty threes, and then this last year, the N I L thing, I believe. Uh, festival players had it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's still totally, you know, how they did it. There's that. We got. Love it, but they got injured, played this year. And they left pretty soon. And that pretty much all.
It's cool. Okay.
But also it's been, you know, like. You see top, we can use it today for instance, that with, you know, last time, everybody's a little bit, has a full size of them. A little bit of stuff in it, and the seats are. Actually, leaving the camp for a while.
That's good.
I mean. Thumb tapping, a lot of sleep. It's really nice. It's got heated seats to.
Well, that's good. That's, that's.
And the remote start. Those are nice in the winter. The remote start, that's the other one that's nice.
I use mine.
David.
Yeah. I got leather seats. That's really nice in the summer too. Yeah.
I can start it on my phone anywhere, it's like satellite.
Or just starting in general. Something, I guess he had money to get the basketball. You can't do it from inside random, get by the window, get it started. By the time you get it locked up, the car is started.
It's like a satellite. Like a lizard.
I have that on my table. It is really nice.
Yeah.
Start it for my office.
I'll, I'll do that here in the winter. By the time I get out there, it's nice and warm.
I say might be, but. Oh, because we got a detached garage, so we have, you know, remote. And you can buy, but they're expensive.
Yes.
Garage for the start.
I did.
Yeah, that's true.
Just wear that as support. I was only wondering, I had the best job. The oldest, stable, sponge job in the.
I started, by, by the time I get out to the garage.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I was a tube of water.
Okay. Get really spoiled.
So I, I saw that remind me somewhere I have, you know, those challenge points? Right? Somewhere I have. Right? I've got, if you do, I've got data storage now. Right next to the home of the big room.
Yeah, I have to. Or something.
Oh, okay.
Just.
With money enough to.
Yeah, I just.
And also it's called the USA system now, in various places, including DC.
Yeah, those are great.
Lot of hard on your, lot of pass companies. They ask all the cars and then. But you've got the deal where you plug your phone into it and it just pulls up. And open your phone and off on the screen. And I saw that, he showed me, oh, you still did it. When I got home, I could not wait. But there's so much, and there's still so much stuff on there. And figure out Bluetooth, they tried it out.
Oh, that's great. You talk.
Cause my wife had that, hers was what I live in.
Yeah, my, my car has all the older, but also the same thing. I mean, it's speakerphone is nice.
Like I said. Except like I said, country. Always with tags. Taxes and also when I entrance, it's going to be the next one. It's a little different than the last. Go from an O six to a twenty two.
Yeah, it's gonna change a lot. Be a shock when you run.
They were wrong. Robinson's really good to deal with.
Come on, nine one?
Yeah.
Sorry, take a line. The fastest, um, service I, I got found going in there to get an oil change, so. They're usually done in thirty, forty minutes.
On service. Riley.
Yeah.
Ryan. They went in and they said, what's up here? Actually, yes, back in the mid eighties.
When was it then?
Tram.
Tram, yeah, yeah. I can even remember what it's called.
Tram.
We bought a station wagon. Nobody was buying. We got a good deal for these.
No, no, we're gonna talk about that.
She knows what they are. She owns ones.
Question is, does she drive?
No, I hate that car. Driving a tank, right?
Way to bring that up, Commissioner Ford.
Station wagon. I was just remembering the conversation.
Told Rich yesterday that, that car caused a lot of arguments in my house.
Remember that, just remember the O's mobile one we had and you still had the drive to movie theaters. Oh, we have the big old speakers, you put it on there, put one on the, I went to put the one on the back window and I broke it. The window's shattered. I went to put the one on the back window and I broke it, the window's shattered. Never, still never hear the end of that one.
Well, that, the old school, they had the one that had the little. Windows up on.
Yeah.
On the back.
Yeah, that, you got it. Some things how I didn't know, anyway. Let's talk ARPA.
Commissioners, Brittany Phillips, Budget and Finance Officer, I am here this morning to give you an update on our ARPA funds. So, of course, we received these funds beginning in twenty twenty one after the COVID nineteen pandemic. The first distribution payment of seven million two hundred nine thousand three hundred forty eight dollars. Was in twenty twenty one, and then the second payment was for the same amount in twenty twenty two totaling fourteen million four hundred eighteen thousand six hundred ninety six dollars. So, since then, projects have been assigned to utilize this money, including Vermont Heights Sewer, which was ninety seven thousand five hundred dollars. That project is completed. We have North County EMS with an estimated amount of one million five hundred thousand three hundred and sixty four dollars. Uh, that project, I believe, is almost done, I think they're just waiting on a couple last minute things. Uh, next is EMS headquarters, we are all very well versed in this, I believe so. This is estimated at ten million six hundred ninety nine thousand eight hundred seventeen dollars. We got the largest amount of money, um, as we continue to start working on that. Emergency management renovations was estimated at a million dollars. And then, of course, the Keats Sewer Project, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars was allotted. So that brings that subtotal of all of those projects, so fourteen million ninety seven thousand six hundred eighty dollars. Total available now, including interest and expenses already incurred, is twelve million nine hundred eighty thousand three hundred ninety eight dollars. And then there is just this little breakdown of the total amount received, which is the fourteen million four hundred eighteen thousand six hundred ninety six dollars that. Those were, uh, the funds that were distributed to us, and then, of course, our total projects to date. Uh, so we still have a remaining amount of three hundred twenty one thousand and sixteen dollars, so that's just the ARPA funds without. Interest. Um, and we also wanted to give you a breakdown on the Keats project because. While the project estimate is four million one hundred thousand dollars, and they did receive two grants and the ARPA funds, they are still short. Four hundred and three thousand one hundred and ten dollars. So, and then also we wanted to mention, those ARPA funds are sitting in an interest bearing account to date, we have received. One million one hundred fifty one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars in interest, which can be used towards these projects. And all, all ARPA funds must be allocated to projects by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and all money has to be spent by next December thirty first. Are there any questions?
Is the, um, what are we gonna start building on the Keats project, are we gonna have that done by the end of next year?
He said today, probably by the first of twenty five, so that's, we need to spend. Bunch of money down before, I suppose.
Well, we gotta spend.
We should have it done by the end of the year.
I know one of the questions was if we could use the grant money to pay back some of that, and Amanda did look into that, and they said you can. Use that grant money to pay back what we've already spent in ARPA, but ultimately, I mean, it's.
Yeah, we need, yeah, it's gonna come out anyways.
I think it's our best interest to use the ARPA money first, right, we know it's done.
Yeah, you know.
And then, you know. Keats, I think if you'd have told Keats. Residents, you're only gonna be responsible for four hundred thousand dollars for that project, they would be dancing in the street.
My, my thought is, is there's still maybe some other available opportunities to even get that down without ARPA at this point in time, but. With the other three hundred thousand dollars, and this is just thought is. Find some other smaller things to kind of spread around the spectrum, so everybody gets a little bit of. Fifty thousand here, eighty thousand, whatever.
That didn't include the interest, you had interest, we've almost got one point five now.
Does that interest have to be spent by twenty five, or do we, are we, is that?
Is that officially ARPA?
That's a good question.
Good question. Technicality, we can check on that.
Cause most, yeah, most entities wouldn't put that away, probably, they probably spend it. Anything interest, but.
I think it would be important to get the. ARPA funds itself spent first. Allocate that, then if we need to do the interest, we need to do the interest, but I say that because I, I keep. I keep getting stuff from the National Association saying that, um, you know, they're starting to tighten those final rules again, and. Um, even before the end of this year, you know, they may start pulling back some of those dollars. So I think it would just be important to just start getting it spent.
Sure.
And then, once it's gone, it's gone, you can't take what's not gone, it's gone already, so.
And we do still, for the Keats project, we still have that USDA role development application that we're still waiting to hear back on, so that could. I mean, possibly cover that four hundred and thirty thousand.
Need to get that paid off.
It might be. It might be advantageous with the dollars available, interest or not interest. Um, to see what other available. Projects are out there that we could.
Can we put it in? CIP or put it towards? Projects need to be.
At least if anything, we need to start looking at the three hundred thousand dollars, or we can apply and just get it applied.
I'm sure you've heard the saying that, that we got one fire station to build.
We do have a list of people that applied.
I was asked by RCPD on a couple of different things. But, go ahead.
I think as it's on our radar, it's been a focus for decades now, but it's on the table again, and as Commissioner Fokie has pointed out. You could easily spend all that remaining just on this facility. And it's about time to dedicate some resources to your administrative facilities of all these buildings down here, and so.
That's a thought of mine too.
One way to do it, and you know, you could redo another floor for that amount in this building or whatever, and so. At some point in time, you know, and you can do that now without a tax burden, an ad born tax burden.
I was thinking after Monday's conversation, you know, Pacheco Hall, maybe. I don't think this floor is gonna change too much.
You got a real good idea there. Because I know, uh. Uh, I almost said something Gary was here, but I didn't want to put him on the spot, he was not aware of our discussion. Of that building coming up, and he mentioned it to me at the department head meeting yesterday, so I suggested to him and John and I get. Back together, but. Man, there's an idea there commissioners, because I tell you, that building. There have been remediation things done before, and it's still where it's at. You know, maybe the push piers thing work and raising the floor does, but you know, I've just had. That same company come out and do some work for me, and sometimes they can only go so far with things, because they start binding and buckling, and you can only go so far.
At the point with that, where it's gonna have to be rebuilt.
Four million instead of two hundred thousand.
Yeah, well, even Gary himself said, you know, uh, and he was just spitballing, it was just a. Less than a five minute conversation, we could build a nice metal building with some limestone veneer on the front to make it look nicer, you know, and so. He's realistic if they were gonna go that way, but just talking to him, his opinion is. Uh, it's not our building, it's yours, but that building is.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
You, use its useful life.
Well, that building in, we had the meeting in, that was a metal building, that was a very nice building, I thought they did a good job.
But that's what I've really liked, because the city came to us early on, Ron Fear did, and said. Uh, they had some ideas on how we could use a portion of our ARPA funds, and while I said the commission's already got it identified, and it's, you know, basically our plan here, and. Is it's benefiting all the taxpayers on what we're doing, these are things that needed to be done, and it's benefiting the entire community.
And it's gonna benefit for generations to come, it isn't just a one time. Yeah, and Amul Station's gonna last for a long time, Keats is gonna be there for a long time. The other projects are gonna be a long time, Pacheco Hall, part of the fair, I mean, if we do that, you know. We're basically saying it is gonna be in Seco Park, but.
Well, with.
Fine with me, but you know, that's gonna benefit the community for decades.
Keats and Fairmont, I'm told the story is what people don't realize, there's commissioners by using those funds, or you increase the values of all of those properties. Or their, their values were not getting enhanced because of the situation they ran.
Well, it's Fairmont, I don't remember, what was the Fairmont sewer?
Similar, similar issues as Keats.
I don't, yeah, it was before.
It was just ending about the time you were coming on, I think.
Money on something that was already a project, because I just don't remember that.
Yep.
There was a sewer there, this was just improvements for their sewer.
Yeah, they, they didn't have a centralized sewer system to connect to the city. They did not. And it's not the park, it's those houses kind of. Yeah, similar type project. Just a lot smaller confined area and less cost.
Well, the ARPA funds is for mainly for. Building and infrastructure.
Well, we can kind of use. You can kind of use, that's, that's the amazing thing about it, it's up until recently. It's been pretty much, you can use it for anything, you can use it for personnel, you can use it. Uh, for whole left right things.
And someone used it to. Pay raises, but that covered it for one year and then.
And that's why I teased that did that.
For projects is more.
When did we have a CIP session planned?
Well, that was the, I think you saw, that's her question.
That is one of my questions later on this afternoon when I present.
Oh, okay, sorry. Maybe we can just preempt that and talk about that now, because this kind of coincides with that. And figure out, out of that, maybe what we could spend the rest of this on and coincide with it, so I said, we need to do that somewhat quickly.
Well, I mean, I like, you know, the, for discussion of this facility, discussion of pot or from the discussion of the rural fire station, and. You can make some extreme headway to take relief off.
Sure.
Current residents and future residents. At no ad born tax cost.
Yeah, I think that's.
The inner side of that too, that's actually huge for all three of these, but.
Yes, I will, I will reach out to Jennifer with Wood O'Briens and ask that, are there any other questions about ARPA funds? Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Brittany. Yeah, I think there's several public entities that use those federal funds to keep themselves afloat, and. You can never use one time monies for that, cause it catches up with you.
Yeah, we're sure, but that's short term things, not.
Fixing things for long term is.
Started our discussion on Monday here, I mean, I don't know how much this first floor is gonna change in the equation.
Which first floor?
This floor.
Oh.
The other ones I, we may need to hold up on those and figure out what we're going to do, but I don't see much changing probably here.
Refresh.
It does.
You got trim coming off there with nails sticking out on those, I mean. I mean, I agree less than the other floors, for sure, not necessarily the reconfiguration, but it could definitely use modernized.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
And the thing is, you may as well do it, because like I said, once you take the windows out. When you take the windows out, you damage the inside too.
Well, yeah, that will hopefully fix this moisture problem too, fix the windows, and, I mean, that's the first thing we have to do basically, let's get that done. What apartment by department? Or what floor is that now?
Speaking of facilities.
I just want to tell you that they were. It should be cleaned up. Big ranch and loose gravel. So, yeah, they went up there this morning, hopefully they got it all cleared online.
Did they actually get three inches of rain up there?
You know, I don't know, it seemed like when I got to the office, there was more rain at the office than it appeared at the house.
Yeah.
I looked at my rain gauge from yesterday, I don't get it.
I didn't leave this morning with it.
I know it rained pretty good at work yesterday around sevenish.
We only measured two tenths up in Sweden period yesterday.
It was kind of really spotty.
Sounds like maybe one little pocket there got some pretty heavy rain. And I got half an inch in my area.
Yeah, I don't think I got more than an inch.
An inch?
Yeah, Seco Park.
Last night?
All day.
Yeah, glad to see the rain.
I was almost asleep from that rain again, ran out to get the cushions up on my, our furniture again. They've been living inside most of. I gotta get. It's crazy.
Okay, yeah, okay, thanks.
Dear Ed Rich. Okay, thank you, Commissioners, Richard, the Republican Clerk, election official. I think the budget presentation's pretty straightforward, the biggest increase, of course, is the, uh. In the elections, uh. Not compared to a presidential, but we are gonna see increased costs due to Xerox machine and printer on the fourth floor. Um, you know, you can see the rest of the cost increase, I don't need to read it to you, the trainings, of course, is. Due to the employee, employee day, we don't call it training day, but employee day, if I call it training day, Elizabeth's probably listening. I get reprimanded to get back to the office, sorry.
I'll just tell you, you said training day.
Other than that, the computer hardware and software in elections is expensive, it's. It has gone up, but you have to remember, we've got more equipment this year, Commissioners, with the scanners. So the scanners are an additional thing, we have to have support maintenance on, and so, all that has gone up, it's due to, uh, additional equipment as well. Other than that, the tech bone commissioners, um, I know you're aware of the Treasurer's Office, Registered Deeds in our office have that. I have never spent a dime out of there, I have authority to, uh, individually as an election, uh, elected official. I have always put that aside and kept it for Riley County to use, at some point in time, we are going to have to. Upgrade and potentially go with a different vendor for accounting, tax. Software, and that will not be cheap, and so that's why I've always kind of put it aside as kind of a little saving to account for the county, not for our office, but when we have to make that wholesale software change now. That's what I've always intended on using this for. Now, I've never used one dollar out of that fund, so the amount that we have in there is budgeted to be spent, just because. We need to do that to line item it out, but I do not intend on spending a dime out of there, just like every other year. Did you have any specific questions on any of the budget numbers, Commissioners? I did go back on elections. Uh, refined the. Let's see, uh. Seasonal temporary part time, there was a much higher number in there before, and got together with Susan and Elizabeth, and really refined that down from the original. Number that was in there. And actually, I did my computer software maintenance and computer hardware numbers, we had to have these budgets. Brittany drives a tight ship, before, I actually got the numbers back from the software company, it was on their end. So I just submitted it, the cost actually came in a little bit more than what I budgeted, but I just left it. We will figure out how to manage it within the budget, hopefully, but I did not go back and change that. The software, uh, PS and M is rather slow in giving me those numbers this year, so I just kind of based off a little increase from last year, which. Isn't quite enough, but we'll figure out how to cover it hopefully. Any questions, Commissioners? And if you take more time later to look at them and have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those. Uh, the staff. Can't say enough, and it was on my radar for probably. Ten years doing what we're finally accomplishing and getting that separate election space, that has seriously been a priority, even John was on the board. That we needed elections in separate space, that was even before all these enhanced security requirements that we've gotten on elections, I've been asking for that, so that is gonna be a huge improvement. Staff is extremely exciting, excited about that opportunity, and so. that will help not only in the elections division, but all other divisions in our offices. Once we're able to reconfigure the rest of the office a little bit get people some more elbow room and privacy as well in other areas. So that's greatly appreciated. Always appreciate, as Commissioners know, we cannot do this work without great staff, but we also can't do it. As you know, as you go to other meetings, without cooperation of Commissioners and supportive Commissioners, we're going to get them. Because we're our one organization, have to work together and I can't do it without your guys' support. So I appreciate that.
What is the completion time on the thing upstairs?
We're hoping the first of July. That was the original goal.
Yeah.
So we're hoping the first of July before the primary. It started out slow and we were really concerned, but they're really going at it now. All the drywalls hung, so they got all the ductwork in place and the drywall's hung. Drywall is not finished yet, but hopefully. This rain's been causing some delays. Windows, you know, the new windows, so. Any questions? If you guys think of any questions, uh, just give them to me and we'll do our best to answer them. Okay, thank you. Next, you have Kevin Larson, eleven o'clock.
I want to tell you, Rich, um, when we start looking at that space in your office, I'd be happy to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. Good, appreciate it. I'm gonna have you helping my house too. I thought you retired.
Yeah, pretty much. I'm still there. I'm so sorry. Move around a little bit up here. This is the first time I've worn heels since I.
Is it? Yeah, they say heels can be hard on you.
This is good. It's got a lot of support in. So we'll see how it feels down the way.
Don, you have a second?
I did.
I didn't have time to go through today's.
Well, if it's in today's or an upcoming one.
I was thinking it was.
Must be an upcoming, because I don't see it on the list of alternatives.
Yeah, it wasn't on today. It's okay. Elizabeth's gonna talk, and then expand and so that conversation's coming up.
Yep, Mr. John, um, Page. Page one oh two.
On today's?
It's, it's the very bottom of Brittany's stuff. Brittany's next presentation.
Assistant General Fund Health Department.
Have a seat. Because both of them have separate revenues and personnel members. I figured you'd want to see health departments too, because it's so big.
I can't open that stuff on that home, on the home network, so. I just printed it, so I'll have a copy of it.
Evan, how you doing?
Like I tell people, you can make extra copies coming by.
Yeah, you don't want to run short. Well, it, it's how it saves you, uh, not increasing ad loan taxes because some point in time, it's going to take ad loan taxes to fix these buildings, to do those other things, you know, so then we don't have to budget more money. It's county building or John Page for that stuff or CIP. You know, that's why this stuff doesn't get nothing because no one ever wants to budget that. That's how you reduce or keep the budget down.
Well, yeah, and that was one of the stuff could happen by the, for this year. If we could allocate, at least allocate it, that way we could see what we think.
You could, and you could reduce your county building allocation. You can do some of that for maintenance. Thing is, you gotta remember when you decide that you need to raise your county building, then you're going to increase it back up and so.
Some point in time, you're going to eat the difference, something one year, two years.
So where it really helps you is on these large projects that never get done and always get kicked down the road.
That's why we decided to do the invest station, because it wasn't going to happen.
That was a great one.
Well, you have to. We can't kick things.
The only thing that's saved us, I mean, a huge thing that has saved us on not increasing that in a lot of taxes and keeping our budgets where they are is the half cent sales tax. The whole reason for the half cent sales tax is because county commissioners would never budget enough to maintain roads or buildings. Why? Because it's so costly, because they didn't want to increase taxes, you heard. Mr. Wilson, no one likes more taxes, so you just keep pushing it down the road.
County is finding out now. Did they talk about doing?
They were talking about doing, you know, I haven't heard anything since.
Yeah, I didn't have any of it.
So you realize the roads were not, and bridges.
Yeah, they're in good shape.
Bridges expense.
Your parents level with counting, we've got a series of bridges that are going.
And that's.
They have to take care of.
Things so get done. It's, without those, it's ad loan taxes and heavily done.
You are up, sir.
Good morning. It's a great honor for me to be here today and to represent seniors. We have several seniors from throughout the county here today to kind of give me moral support. I usually say it. Technically, I need that, but it's great to be here with you this morning. And as you know, I'm Kevin Larson and I'm here to represent the senior citizens of Riley County. I'm your appointee to the Area Council of Aging and have been elected president of the council. I come here today to share the budget request of the different agencies that are part of, that are represented in the area council and depend upon the budget allocations given to them by the Riley County citizens as determined by their representatives, you, the Riley County Commissioners. You have their requests before you, and I'm sure you have looked it over. So I rise today to speak on their behalf and in turn speak for the vulnerable of Riley County. The seniors who over the past years of their life have helped to make Riley County the county that it is, and is now, and they are now in the waning years of their life. They find value and in reality depend upon the services that are provided by these agencies. The seniors have given in the past and now they deserve to be given. All of these agencies provide a crucial service to the senior citizens of Riley County. I would invite you to take time to eat a meal with the seniors at the Manhattan Senior Center, at the Randolph Meals, the Riley Meals, the Hunterville Meals, the Ogden Meals, or ZDell, to walk the halls of the Good Shepherd Hospice House and visit with the families who are seeing their family members being cared for in the final days of their life. To be a volunteer with many who volunteer through the R S B program and provide needed services to individuals without any pay or compensation coming to their cells. Or to take part in some of the various programs offered through the Manhattan Senior Center and the other agencies I represent. The money you give to our agencies help facilitate all of their activities. And for many seniors in our county, these are the services that give inducements and quality to their daily life. For many, it is a lifeline that is crucial to their well-being. Today, as you can easily see, I come with an urgent mandate by the agencies I represent. Our budget request for the past five years have been stelvated with no increases at all. Meanwhile, as you are well aware, the cost of everything has seen increases. I have great admiration for how these various agencies have been able to keep their services viable and purposeful for those people that they serve. But today, several of them are facing real crisis. They are running out of money to provide the basic services that they offer. An example is the Plent Hills Area Council of Aging. Riley County is one of eighteen counties that receive their services. This agency oversees the Meals on Wheels program. The area's headquarters is located here in Manhattan. As said, Riley County gains a financial benefit by having all of its personnel and the bulk of their resources centered in our county. But being one of eighteen counties, Riley County has to share responsibility for meeting the financial needs of the agency. Riley County has the largest population of all the counties they represent and the second largest amount of citizens over sixty-five years of age. With that being said, Riley County's share of the total budget is crucial to their operation. The Meals on Wheels program is very popular, a well-regarded program. But without proper funding for the wages of the cook and the health insurance benefits, the program faces increased challenges and frustrations. Over two hundred people depend upon these meals being prepared for them and delivered by volunteers five days a week. It would be a great disservice to them to have these meals only prepared and delivered four days a week, which is, I'm told, possa- a real possibility, if needed, funding is not received. I know that in the total scheme of things for the county, our budget request can easily be overlooked and considered not too urgent, as evidenced by the fact that our requests for the past five years have been ignored and kept stelvated. But we represent a population of Riley County that is vulnerable and is in need of the services our council provides. Many of the recipients of our services are housebound. They do not drive. They do not have any other social interactions except with the contacts given and provided by our services. The senior citizen population of Riley County is growing, and the needs for our services are growing as well. We cannot continue to provide these services without adequate funding. As the years move us past the COVID crisis, all agencies are seeing an increase in the usage of their services. This fact alone puts a greater demand upon the agencies and what they can deliver and provide. Also, it's important to note that so many of our seniors that receive and utilize these services are not seniors who receive large pensions and maximum social security payments. As my banker friend in Letterville told me, you would be surprised to know how many people living in Letterville have only their minimum social security check as their monthly income. The services that you help support and encourage help individuals such as these enjoy a more worthwhile life. And as you can ea- easily see, any increases in the cost of these services often poses economic hardships for them. Your support is crucial to see these services continue, to see them survive and thrive. I would be remiss to not acknowledge the volunteers who've given their time, talents, and energy to facilitate and make all these agencies be able to perform at a much higher level than could be done if their presence was not there. The budget request for these is considerably higher without such a legion of volunteers. As I make this request for funding, I thank of Marjorie Wooler of Randolph. She's over a hundred and two years of age. The Randolph Senior Meals is an opportunity for her to get out, to share a time of fellowship with others. That would not be possible without that service. I thank of so many others who find fellowship, a welcoming environment, a place to be away from their home and a warm meal that they did not have to prepare. The funding you provide is crucial to, uh, their operation and, uh, what they do. So they, I also thank of several of my friends who deliver meals on wheels and the affirmation that they give to the worth of such program. They tell of the friendships that are made with the people to whom they deliver, and they tell of being one who, because they are there every day, find out about issues that need to be attended to, or as happened to a couple of them, they were the ones to be the first to find that their meal recipient had died. They are just a couple of illustrations of the worth of the services being offered in Riley County. The need is great, and I cannot say it any stronger. Do not simply tell these agencies that they're giving such vital services that they must do all they do with the same amount of money they've been given for the past five years. I realize that our request for this year, it fulfilled completely. It's a nineteen point twenty-six percent increase over what was approved for our twenty twenty-four budget. But if you consider that there's been no increase in our budget amount for the last five years, it really represents less than a five percent increase per year, which is lower than the inflationary rate we have been experiencing as a nation. In reality, over fifty-three thousand dollars over the amount given to these agencies over the past five years would be completely the budget request of each agency this year. I know that many of you have heard complaints concerning the lack of funds from various of our agencies. And it's easy to say that you, as members of the commission, do not make those allocations. Our Council of Aging does. But when the budget amounts are so far missed for each entity, it's not hardly possible to cut back on one agency to pay another because then you have created more problems. As it is often said, it's not fair to rott Peter to pay Paul. Thus, as you can see, the principal functions of these organizations are to provide senior and disabled citizens with meals, healthcare, transportation, educational, social opportunities. Whenever possible, most of these organizations have implemented cost-saving plans and or will be increasing the cost of their services to those that use them. Whenever possible, they seek extra sources of funding. But it saddens me to see that such efforts have to be made. With all the energy I can muster, I appeal to you as members of the county commission and say that the senior population of Riley County deserves your total support. And with such a major support, you are telling them in a very positive way that they matter. Yes, the Riley County Area Council of Aging deeply appreciates the support and funding that has been and continues to be given to its program. But as I am sure that each of you can see, the impact, the amount of services rendered and the influence upon the quality of life for our senior citizens of Riley County can only be enhanced with adequate funding. As I say so often, the seniors of Riley County in the past have given. Now it is time to give to them and let them know that because they have cared in the past, you care today. Thank you so much for your consideration of our request. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any at this time.
We appreciate it. We do want you just to realize that there are several, we're in several institutions, we are hurting. So we appreciate any consideration you give to us. Certainly would be appreciated. Because these services are very vital. It's amazing. So for a lot of those people, that's for those senior meals, that's the only time they get out that week. And they depend on that time to get together, to share time together, and it's just a real good time of fellowship, that's for sure. And obviously, for all the others down the line, the volunteers who've given their time and talent. You know, if they speak of the people who depend upon them, get volunteers to mow their grass, to take them to doctor's appointments and such, that would not be possible otherwise. So that makes a big difference. So any other questions?
Yeah, the other counties that support this agency, are they getting increases now? And does that help?
No, I've talked with that, where we have, we're part of those eighteen counties. And what they do is they go through and take, and they look at all the different counties with the number of people that they have, and then the number of senior citizens that they have, and then they take their total budgets and then they prorate it out as far as the need of individuals involved with it. And since Riley County has the second largest number of seniors, but the largest number of people, you know, we do have, our amount comes up a little higher than others. And I do know that in talking, one of the big issues in the past has been how can we afford to help out our cooks and stuff. And I know we're talking to Chase County, it's a couple, and it says they have actually put the cooks on the county payroll. And they are employees of the county, so their pay to prepare those meals and stuff is actually would be part of your county employees. And so that makes it a lot easier for that area council aging, because there, that's all taken care of through making them county employees. And that way, they qualify for the health benefits and stuff that would come with being a county employee. I know that's just what you'd like to do, is add some more employees to your payroll.
Well, I was just, I was just curious about what the other counties are doing.
It seems to me that in most, I don't, I suppose in some of these smaller counties, my interpretation is you have a lot more intense interaction with the senior citizen population. And so therefore, it seems to me like in most cases, a lot of their hearts are fairly not put in front of that. Because obviously, they, they're a real part of their population function. So anyway, and the thing we have is, as you get further north out of the county, you know, somehow or another, it's just easier to kind of forget the world out there and stuff, and it's kind of easy to. You know, I know that when I taught at Riley County High School, I had fellow teachers who had no idea where Lederville was. And Lederville is three miles away. They had come out to school, but they never went to Lederville. They had no idea where that was. And so obviously, it's pretty easy to not realize that the people who live on the north end of the county live closer to three other county seats than they do in Manhattan. So anyway, but as you can tell, I taught history, so I could stand up here and give you all some of my history lessons, that's for sure. Any other questions? Well, we appreciate all this. We appreciate these people who've come out today, spent effort of their time to come down today and give some visible areas of support. We've got a lot of people out there who depend upon, so we appreciate.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We do bring in cooks on. I suggest we put them under the counselor's. They keep not here.
Not here.
That's a whole point. Noxious weed, yeah, the cooks get under noxious weed.
Commissioners, I did get a response from Jennifer already about the interest. And it does not have to be spent in the same amount of time that our heart wants to. So that has no restrictions. I want to make a correction on my date because I hit the wrong number when I put it into the car. Money has to be spent by twenty twenty-six.
Okay. Okay, great.
By the end of twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
But we can spend that interest on anything we might, basically.
Get a clarification too, though, if we have to keep that interest in that separate fund, or if we could move it to CIP to interest, or wherever we want it to, just get that clarification at some point for us. That'd be helpful.
So the total amount that we have, sorry Cory, total amount we have is somewhere north of a million. It's almost millions, I have.
So hopefully, we'll get done with some of these things by twenty twenty-six.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, yeah, so I mean, this one needs to be done. And Tyler.
Well, then a lot of people will be like. I still want to have a CIP session for shouting those things.
Right, that's a big one.
Yeah, we are.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cory Meyer here for the twenty twenty-five ITGIS budget request. Glad you're all sitting down. I am pleased and real proud of what we've done and to tell you guys that our overall budget request increase is only of two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars from last year, from twenty twenty-four. You've heard me say many times that we've been working really hard on flattening things out, stretching out our renewals, planning them strategically so that we're not being hit with large replacements at one time. You know, as you know, a server, it might be eighteen to twenty thousand dollars. Storage might be sixty to eighty thousand dollars. So we are working really hard, making sure that we are not trying to run a budget of peaks and valleys, which is what's been happening. The other big piece that we did was our aerial flights used to be a hundred eighty to two hundred thousand dollars every two years, really running those peaks and valleys. So now we flatten that out to where actually it is a yearly payment, but it is less overall with the new company that we've got with. So a little bit then to discuss just where some of the pieces are at. Our personnel services, that increased from nine fifty-nine oh eighty-six to a million fifteen seven sixty-four, those numbers provided by HR. Adding contractual services, though, this is where we saw one of those decreases, because we went from having a large aerial flight payment down to less payment on a year-by-year basis. So we had a decrease there of, from seven hundred fifty-one five ten to six eighty-four nine eighty. So that kind of runs an offset there, because our personnel went up fifty-six thousand, and so then our contractual went to a decrease sixty-six thousand. And so this is where we get into that number increase overall of only being just a little over two thousand dollars. Commodities, we have an increase in here. We got a project that we're looking into and beginning to do, and this is one we're going to start on, and that's going out and identifying section corners throughout the county. A way we can increase the accuracy of our measurements of properties all throughout the county. There's a pilot project done a few years back in one of the towns up towards Lederville up there. And so we've had great success in that and that data and those, and so we are beginning to have those discussions. So a little bit of money increase in there in case we need to go out for services. SMH was used before to go out and find points that we couldn't locate ourselves. So that's a project that we're, we're beginning to work on there. But again, that was just a slight increase in that sixteen thousand five hundred commodities. Our capital outlay, a decrease there, forty-five hundred dollars. As always, and you hear me say that I continue to, our strategic plan or our goals, our budget is really to keep as flat as we can. We'll run into things that'll happen. It's what happens with IT. It's what happens with technology. But as our plan through my staff, which is an amazing staff, where they understand that our goal is, is try to do the best we can to plan ahead, try to do what we can to get the best on doing multi-year agreements on things that we keep pricing and those things down. So again, then a recap is that our overall increase is only two thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars from our twenty twenty-four request. My seven-year projection at this time, I don't see anything outside of a three percent increase or decrease, one way or the other, over the next seven years of what was planned for. And it's nice that we can do that, because we know when our replacements are of servers, of storage, of switches, of equipment. We know when those warranties go out, and we can make those plans out ahead of time, and we're working really hard to do that. It's also a great benefit that we have good stewards of our equipment and all the departments and what they use and how they go about it. Since we know you've got that.
Some of us.
Throw a curve whenever I can, right? Yeah, yes, we have the extended high durability warranty for you.
Appreciate it.
Proportionately, we do not spend equal amounts on hardware per permission.
Yes.
I set the curve high.
Yeah, it's, we ought to just have you be, you know, somebody that tests equipment for them.
Durability.
Yeah. Oh, your wheels are turning now.
You started it.
I did.
You have an autograph for a laptop?
They don't work. They don't work, believe me.
No.
You got an extended warranty on those.
Yeah, we'll have to give them those giant cases with the foam in it.
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah. So I really, I mean, it's not a lot for me to come in here and get elaborate on, because I'm not after a big increase. We don't have anything wild and crazy going on, but I am certainly open to discussions, questions, and any areas. I was just in the beginning of the week or last week with the new Microsoft licensing proposal, which, if you recall, was around a hundred and thirty thousand. That is included in the twenty twenty-five, and still we are only asking for, you know, a twenty-one hundred dollar increase. So that's why I said we've done a great job in working these numbers in and planning out things strategically, and so I really think where we're at. I am open to answer any questions if you have any. Yes.
Of course, I always have a question. At the last county officials lunch in Utah, yeah, you talked about security issues and increases in that. I'm just wondering if you have enough in here to cover those issues. It looks like a two thousand dollar increase.
So we actually do, and that's in the Microsoft licensing that we moved to. The change in the licensing type that we moved to for Microsoft is giving us those additional security functions and features included in that licensing. And I tell you that, like, Chris is working on that every day. And so with that new licensing that we had, we changed. Spoke about those security features and things. They are included. We just now have to move forward with the implementation now that we have the new licensing through Microsoft.
Okay, so you're covered.
Yes, we're covered there. Absolutely right. That security line in there is on a physical security. If we need to do things to help out on a building, cameras, some of those kind of things, when, as far as what that line goes and why that increase there. We've got some more camera, additional cameras to be put in in places that have been pointed out are some blind spots in some areas. So that's what that increase there was for, was a physical security. But on the computer side of things, that will be handled through changes of our Microsoft licensing.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And this may not be for you, because it was under personnel, and you said basically you got those numbers.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, basically, everybody steps, which is there about three percent, and yours is a whole lot more than that. But is, did you have different people in? Because I take most of them and going through them, minimum, mine's three percent, yours is like six percent. I just wondered, maybe that's a question.
I don't have an answer for you on that. I just.
Question for.
Read me and check it out. Read it and check it out.
Yeah.
Because I realize those, yeah, that's what I said.
Then. Uh, my, my initial on where that was is James Burgess, who was our new hire this year. He was hired in because he had twenty years of experience. And so I, I believe where that answer would come from is that based on the calculations of half, I think it's half credit, he didn't come in.
The scale from.
Yes, sir.
That's four people that would.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay, that's, yeah. Actually, I listen, I just was curious, because most of them are about the same in this.
Yeah, that was the, yeah, our, because our new hire. I'm sure that's what it is.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Is that right?
Those numbers are still reflective of no holdup.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I do like how you're kind of trying to extend your budgeting process out a couple of years and trying to, you're not going to get it perfect, obviously. You don't know some things that'll happen, but the intent is to try to get an idea where you're going to be three, five years down the road.
Yeah.
Certainly like, certainly like that type of planning.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I appreciate that you try to keep your budget as low as possible and really research it.
Actually, I looked at you and thought that was an oversight, considering all the high teachers, but. So, yeah, being able, being able to even out the flights to pay every year instead of, before you're.
Yeah.
This year and then down there, you know, that makes it easier overall.
Yes, that helps out there, especially if we land on a year where we do need to, in a particular, I might say, this one year, I'm asking forty more because of this particular replacement. Well, that forty plus, as you're saying, the high year, all of a sudden, that's a real spike in that. And I don't like that. And so that's where we've really been trying to focus on, on keeping it there.
Right.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Commissioner. Have a great day.
You too.
Next Commissioner Jill Michael Bowler.
Right, yeah, she'll be there. Sounds good. Thank you.
Do you want to move Michael up?
Good.
It's four minutes.
Yeah, it's mine.
He's been here for a while.
Unless you're still practicing your presentation.
That's fine by now, Mike.
Was he rehearsing back there or just talking to itself?
I was taking notes and scratching stuff down.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Bowler with the Bradley County Noxious Weed Household Hazards with his budget requests for twenty twenty-five. I too feel like I've got some fairly good news. I think that I've been up here multiple times this year, and I've talked about the price of chemical and diesel fuel going down. And you will recall, in just the not-too-distant past, we were seeing eighty and ninety percent increases in some of those categories. And I really didn't overreact terribly, and I did not increase those line items dramatically. But we are seeing those stabilize, and actually, we're seeing chemical prices go down in our cost of transportation for hazardous waste. And so for that reason, I was able to reduce those two line items, five thousand dollars on one and five thousand seven hundred dollars on another. What my budget is down to is I did some bit of a show and cup game and just changed, took that numbers and applied them to different areas of my budget. The only real one line item that I would like to point out that is an increase in the past, if I can find it here, it's on the, on the building maintenance and repair. If it jumps out at anybody, right, I'll please let me know where that may be.
Is that twenty-four eighty?
Twenty-four eighty. Thank you. Thank you, Brittany. Yeah, there it is. So we've been mostly underfunded in that area, two thousand dollars, just when it comes to building, maintenance, and repairs. I mean, you can't go a long way with that. We have generally, Public Works covers a lot of that, but sometimes when there's improvements, we'll make deals with the Public Works, and you'll see there was a nine thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollar expense. That's a perfect example of that. Last year, we had our concrete out in front of our HHW building. It was heavily water damaged, and we were getting some water into the building. John agreed to provide the personnel and the equipment to fix that if I would come up with the materials to get it repaired. And two thousand dollars doesn't buy you a whole lot of concrete. We came out at about nine thousand dollars on that line item. So that's a change. That's a three thousand dollar increase, which I still believe is a fairly modest amount for building, repair, and maintenance. And then below on the capital outlay, there's, there's where you'll find the changes. I hadn't in the past budgeted anything in the capital outlay, and you'll see other equipment. We recently have been updating our rental sprayers, and rental sprayers are nine thousand dollars or almost nine thousand dollars. Uh, and you'll see other equipment, uh, we recently have been updating our rental sprayers and rental sprayers are nine thousand dollars or almost nine thousand dollars. And I got some emails that said, well, Michael, that's great, but you don't have any money budgeted in the Capitol Outlay. We need to change that. So. Uh, the money where I was able to reduce for chemical and also the hazardous waste, I then just put that down on the equipment and technology hardware. So there was money in those line items as we replaced other equipment. Uh, it's, although it's always been in the budget, it's now appropriately documented as a line item that you may spend. It's better for budgeting and financing that way that it's a more accurate assessment. So overall, um, I'm asking for a three thousand dollar increase, which amounts to a right at a one percent increase overall. That does not take into account personnel, uh, which is largely, um, much out of my control. The exception of the, uh, overtime pay, which we've been able to stay and not increase the amount of that on, on overtime, even though it's last year. We had pretty significant callouts for some of the lesser things. So my goal overall was to be as neutral or as close to neutral as I possibly can. Fortunately, those items where we have seen a reduction and enabled me to come very close to doing that. Um, and overall request for a three thousand dollar increase, which I'm pretty happy about giving the state of the market, but we're, we're doing well. As far as the things that we need to keep going, like I said, you've seen the real stabilization, if not a drop in price, price, very pleased about that. So with that, Commissioners, I would stand for any questions. I realize we probably have one of the smaller budgets of the county, but no less important. Certainly doing my job to keep costs at absolute minimum, try to stay as neutral as possible. Questions? Very, very simple. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Michael. Long lunch break until one fifteen, Commissioners.
Do we have to listen to you?
You do.
Wow, man.
For quite some time.
I know, I noticed.
Yeah.
I do. Forty-five minutes. My goodness.
We don't spend that much money, do we?
She has a lot to say.
We do.
So we've heard.
I like just.
All right.
One fifteen.
See you guys in an hour or so.
He did a few years ago, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I heard that somebody, I moved it all to his garage.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I forgot it was Zach Schipper, that one.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. So, and he should discuss.
I'm kind of wondering how it's, it's Catherine, the city director has involved those station wagons.
Something selling?
They are station wagons or hot commodities.
Are they?
Yes, they are. People want station wagon.
You might go get another one.
Yeah.
Unless you have to get two signatures on the, on the.
I think you can get it, Bill, worked out with Brittany. She'd sell it to you.
Believe me.
Bill, that's a, can you, we, person, popcorn, same things as how, um, chocolate, that, uh.
And commissioners are alive.
Yeah.
Okay.
Listen.
Here we are, the back leg of this.
Thank goodness, huh?
Yeah.
Can we end it?
Oh, wait a minute, we gotta listen to Brittany.
Aw, what kind of welcome this is.
No, do not. Well, she's got a lot she's got to go through, that was the point.
Forty-five minutes, my goodness.
Yeah, I tried to look at previous presentations and they took about forty minutes. So, okay, then we'll start with the Board of County Commissioners budget.
Raise it.
Yeah. Wow, it's an election year, you're even going there.
Wow. All right.
And must be anticipating a certain commissioner dropping more laptops.
Oh.
Yeah.
If I have to, I'll pay for that on my own box.
Do we have a line item for equipment?
You do.
Oh.
So there is a overall slight increase of one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Surprisingly, that's not in equipment, it is actually.
We better talk about it.
I have that in label services, does with Dick Carter, so.
Oh, I wonder what legal service, that's ridiculous, okay.
Oh, wow.
So, I just kind of looked at what we've done in the past for that. You see in twenty-three, we spent twenty-eight thousand, so. Any questions on the V O C C budget?
Where do laptops fit in there?
Next is the Coroner Department. This has seen a pretty significant increase, as you can see, in twenty-three. We spent quite a bit of money. And so from our twenty-four budget to twenty-five, it is a twenty-four thousand dollar increase. But you can see why we've done that.
Why did it, I was looking at that and I was thinking, why did it go down so much last year? Did we?
Well, we just budgeted. It's just the swag, I mean, if anyone.
That's what we budgeted.
If anyone can predict that.
Budgeted is twenty-three.
Well, we may well exceed that this year. You know where we're at this year?
Okay, I know we're, we're pretty high, Nick, and I, I know Michelle's brought it up to me that we need to keep an eye on that.
We don't have an individual, right? It's just a group that we use, the coroner.
Yeah, correct, I mean, there's one that's appointed, but they have deputy coroners.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm. You have one individual, but they also have deputies under them. Uh-huh.
So this is, this goes up because of, among the deaths?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah, unattended deaths.
Unattended deaths. And that's in the whole county, it's, is it, including the city?
I could give you probably three reasons why, too.
Right.
Drug-related?
Mm-hmm.
Mental health-related? Behavioral-related?
Like abuse, that, that, that's right.
Okay. Any other questions on coroner? Okay, gent services, I'll start with personnel. This isn't really an increase that much on the personnel side. We just do separation of service in here, no other salaries, no salaries get paid out of here, except for separation of service.
I think that. You think that one would start kind of shifting down, what, what am I missing?
Well, we can't really ask people anymore, we found out, I think this week, that we can't ask people anymore if they're going to be retiring. So now we're just trying to make sure we have money in there, in case they do.
There's still a fair amount of us eligible that have those points.
Well, you can't do it, sorry.
And that's, that's kind of what Elizabeth looks at, as you know.
Well, if you look at those numbers, Elizabeth, then there's still quite a few of. Long-term, you know, over-employees.
Yes.
I call them over, because they're all younger than me.
Oh, that's, I mean, I've seen those numbers too, but they're not as high as they were two or three years ago, so I.
Correct.
Correct, I just.
Well, but it's. I think.
All right, there's a large number, right?
Department heads have all gone, and that's for the higher costs, and they'll get, still got numbers in other places.
I think just like, I mean, about the time I'm ready, then you've got multiple in my office that are gonna have their eighty-five. You know, the ladies in the office that are just a little bit younger than me, there's gonna be a lot of them that all hit that point at the same time, so it just kind of goes in cycles.
Um, wait a minute, I do have a question, I forgot about on the rally, the board of the county commissioners department. On the capers, there's quite a reduction, was that?
Something too.
From seventeen thousand budget to twelve?
Um, I would have to double-check the reason why, I did, I went back and looked, but I think if there's a working after retirement, maybe, I, I need to look, I need to double-check that.
That shouldn't have been that, oh, you mean?
Yeah, because working after retirement, you have to pay a higher rate.
Yeah.
We have to pay a higher rate as an employer of someone, an employee who's working in retirement. Mm-hmm.
I'll hold on to stretch after I'm done.
Help someone?
Not anymore, that's why it went down.
Well, no, it's gonna go up.
She's under county commissioners.
Yeah.
Oh, under county commissioners, gotcha, gotcha.
It's changed a lot, it's gone from seventeen to twelve.
Last year, so, because you look at those three, or twenty-three, it's one, it looks, something must have been off in last year.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, for sure.
I'll double-check.
Yeah, this year it's more consistent with two years ago than last year.
Last year's might have been.
Yeah, there's a huge difference, I would.
Do we actually go back for a second? I just caught my eye there and I didn't catch. Do we really spend two thousand dollars on mileage and tolls and parking? Yeah, we probably do.
Yeah.
They did that year, anyway, twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
Okay. Toll side, okay, gotcha.
Next year it'll go down.
Yeah, we should, we have a lot of stuff here next year, so that'll go down.
Yeah, and then, then you did it, what, one or two trips to DC?
Yeah, but that's not mileage.
Yeah, trouble is that's in there.
That'd be unfair.
Yeah, fair, logic.
And that, that will stop right there.
Yeah, okay, but that was the one thing that jumped out at me, that difference.
Mm-hmm.
I'll double-check, I remember when I was saying it's gathered.
Let's go back to where we were.
So, back on gent services, contractual services did increase quite a bit from what we had spent in twenty-three and to what we are projecting for twenty-twenty-five. And the big increase was in, I'm gonna say this wrong, in digit, attorney fees? Um, I mean, we, we spent.
Adjective.
In digit, sorry, I know. I try not to say it.
I got another adjective I could use, but we won't use it.
Yeah, so just in twenty-three, you can see that we spent five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And so when I was projecting this, I really think six hundred is probably closer, I did ask Judge Bannister his opinion. But, um, so that's where we landed. Electric and gas services also went up, and this is because we are adding that new building for the EMS station, and so we're trying to project for that.
You've projected it for half a year, right?
Yeah, yeah. And then propane, we haven't budgeted for this in the past. I am sorry, I forget which building that's for, thank you, let her know.
Oh, EMS. So.
Also, phones went by.
Yes, okay, thank you, I had that written down in here, so there is a huge increase in that, because recently our A T and T bills started coming in significantly higher than what they were. So we did go ahead and increase that line to try to cover that cost, because it went from eighty-five dollars a month on something to a hundred and twenty-five. And so we are trying to cover that cost, and Corey is trying to work with them, but at this point, as far as I know, we haven't gotten anywhere.
This phone service one, does that include when we're paying people for their, using their own phones, or?
That's not like taxes, sorry.
Taxes.
Well, taxes is where it went up, but there should, I don't think we pay anybody's, like, phone out of here.
Uh, general services now.
Not for their cell phones, they've been.
Does that come under?
Department, it'd be individual department pays those, or something.
So we have a monthly fee for the landlines, plus extra for fax.
Yes.
Why? If you pay them for a landline, you should get, it's a landline, a fax goes right in with the landline.
One fax usually costs more.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're always an extra charge, just like on our copiers, too.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I didn't even know people use fax anymore.
Actually, quite a bit.
Yeah, I know doctors using pharmacies, but.
You got my chart and a whole bunch of other apps. Okay, I'll leave a little, and the attorneys, I can see the attorneys, yeah, we've sealed a lot of factories.
The next big increase is the budget stabilization. So we are requesting that be increased to four million five hundred thousand dollars, this hasn't been increased. The last increase was in twenty-twenty-three, to four million dollars.
What was the initial, when that was set up, what was the initial push?
Our policy is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to increase it, there was a couple of years we didn't do that, and the reason that we're recommending the five hundred is because we have it to take out of a larger beginning balance for general than we need, rather than transfer that into C I P used part of it.
I got you, but when you established that fund, did you have a threshold that we're gonna get to this point, and then that's where we're gonna leave it, or what was the rationale?
Because as national standards, you could look it up, like, G F O A, the National Government Finance Officers Association, I mean, they recommend a god-humongous amount, like ten percent or fifteen percent, and we are well below that. And so there, there is no national standard, there isn't a state standard, but there is no national standard we follow, it's just where we feel we are comfortable. Kind of like they say personally, you know, three to however many months' bills you can pay, and so, you know, if we didn't have no money coming in, uh, four million dollars would go pretty quick.
Right, I agree, I just, I.
It's just a comfort level we have and a satisfaction level with every time we get raided by Moody's. You know, every time we get interviewed by Moody's, this last one was a really long one, I had to fight to, and we actually got our rating increase extremely high to explain to them, we have that, and they can see in our history that we've never touched that, and that it continues to grow. Even though we're not up to that national standard amount, they say, oh, well, that's really good, you have that liquid money that you can use right away if needed. Plus, our policy of C I P of five hundred thousand dollar cushion in there for emergencies that we had, too, we, we don't have near that amount allocated for specific projects, but our policy is to always keep five hundred thousand dollars in there. And plus our balance that we have in C I P, those are all things they take into account for our bond rating, and so since they're comfortable with about where we're at, that's kind of how we gauge our comfort level. But yeah, if we were to go with national standards, our budget stabilization would be.
But at the end, last year, we added a significant amount to it, I thought, to offset what we didn't.
Yeah, how much do we have in that account?
Exactly.
Four million is what we actually have.
We hit the budget amendment, we added.
And that's not an account, that's a line item within that account.
Yeah. Well, we hit the last budget amendment, or whatever it was last year, we added significant amount to get to the four million. Excuse me, I've got allergies.
Now we're gonna add another four and a half million to it, or?
No, five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. The, the policy is to add two hundred and fifty thousand every.
Yeah, we have shortchanged that, you too.
I remember how this all was established, was back in nineteen ninety-three, when I was the accountant in the treasurer's office, we had the ninety-three flood.
Right.
We had to spend a lot of money in a hurry, and no federal government was there to bail us out right away. The, the program then was with FEMA, you spend the money, then we'll reimburse you. And so Eileen King and I, of course, were the ones working on that with the commissioners, and we got to the point where we were almost out of liquid cash, and we're gonna have to tell the board, flood or no flood, we're about out of liquid money to spend, you're gonna have to quit spending money, and so that's, after that is when we adopted the policy, and started out with one million in there originally. But that's why, and that's why, uh, previous public works director Leon Hobson always kind of eyed that money, and he, his, his definition of emergency was somewhat more lax than a true, uh, like tornado or flood, and always wanted to have access to that for different, like, uh, large equipment failure. and always wanted to have access to that for different, like a large equipment failure, some said, no. And so we never have used any knock on wood, came close a couple of times with pandemic and other things.
The other thing I've, I had, I think I've asked this before and I don't remember the answer, but is that investable?
It is, it is, it's part of what Shiloh invests, it's part of the monies that Shiloh.
The interest in putting in there is included or general.
Correct.
And I'm curious if at some point that would be more advantageous to put the interest back on top of that, just add it back to it.
It's kinda like we were talking about the IT thing, I was talking to you, one half dozen of the other.
Taking it off of one and just adding it to the back end of the other and same thing.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Add that for, okay.
Cause we put that interest as income.
Yeah.
I can't wear one of these.
In general.
Any other questions on general services?
So yeah, it's just a five hundred thousand dollar increases.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
Okay, so the next is road and bridge half cent sales tax. Um, as you can see, we added in a twenty twenty-four estimated column, um, so we could really kinda look at what we're estimating at to spend the rest of this year with projects and then really be able to budget for twenty twenty-five a little bit more accurately. And so John did put in seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars here, um, John's here, if you have questions about that.
Yeah, a couple of questions, is, are these all the remaining projects that were built in that fund?
So that finishes up Fancy Creek and it starts parallel, Cat Road, Culver. Um, we plan to build out, we put Mills Road Bridge. That's, that's gonna be a fairly big one, that's six hundred feet long, it's probably pretty long. Um, get this year, and then I think after that, it leaves us with just uh.
Click up just a little bit so I can see all of it.
Culver, which is not gonna be very much. So we're getting close to the end, for, by the beginning of next year, I hope we have them all done.
Okay.
Um, but.
And then we'll start.
So I expected to be at the end of this year. And then what we'll have, we should still have three million dollars plus left.
So then what are we able to do with that?
Anything road and bridge or like?
It'd be good to set up a work session and uh are, is the roads and bridge advisory board functional?
No, we're down three still, we need, we got two appointments to make and a one from the chamber that we still need to get on there and yeah, we need to get that going.
The county.
We've got a couple lining up, but we haven't an appointment yet.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna try to get all three of them done at once and I need, I'm gonna get with the chamber on Tuesday on that and see if they got.
I've been trying to work on that, but you're tied up with grand stuff with University Park and some of the other, the water districts. But we plan on having that meeting and at least to start for the point two sales tax to.
Right, when you're.
Office, or at least get that advertisement out, consultants for the next projects of the point two, but yeah, we still have money here to work with here too.
Evan knows there's twenty-four hours in the day, right?
I'm afraid he's uh watched his boss not work that one.
Any other questions on absent sales terms? Okay, next we have the point two cent sales tax. Uh, we didn't put an estimated column in here, we just moved on with what we already budgeted. Um, we're, I mean, we're not gonna spend that three point four for twenty twenty-four. Um, but that, we will go ahead and budget our full budget authority for twenty twenty-five. Um, that way, if we do start projects next year, we can get those moving. Any questions on that?
That, we've been kinda waiting on.
Yeah.
Wildcat Creek and who will develop and to reroute that entrance. And to still kinda waiting for some edits in the memo of understanding or an agreement with the city to start the design on the parlay piece.
Okay. I might schedule some time and talk to you when we want.
Still have that money from the other one, it starts to fall away.
But there's.
So that's this and Bill, that, you mean nine of those.
Oh, yeah, that's a good.
While we're using up the other one.
Yep.
Okay, any more questions on road and bridge? Okay, next is insurance, and again, I added in this twenty twenty-four estimated column because I really wanted you to see what we're dealing with this year and going into next year. Uh, insurance costs have went up drastically. Uh, we sat down with our insurance agent and they, they warned us that it was coming and it was gonna look, it was gonna look rough. Um, so this is really where we're at. I did ask Brooke yesterday, just overall, what are they saying as an increase? And she said, just for property insurance across the board, at least twenty-five percent increase.
Well, most would be. None of these buildings are getting newer.
No, we are adding.
They get more expensive.
Well, I mean, that's more, but also being.
Twenty-five percent for all of it?
Yeah, well.
I'm sorry, but you know, I'm just gonna say it, the insurance companies, you know, they're, they're becoming one of the great scourges of our country, just in general. Health insurance, the, the whole nine yards, they're just, they're just raking everybody over the coals and they don't realize the destructive nature that that's causing. I'm sorry, that was my vent for the day. I had to deal with them earlier today on a health related thing. You can tell I'm not happy.
I, I said.
Yeah.
The young man I sat with is uh Ron Fear's nephew, actually, he's a fear, which Farm Bureau Insurance. And him and I were talking and he was talking about how ungodly insurance has gotten.
I mean, I understand, it's gotta keep up with inflation, it's gotta keep up with certain things too, but. Yeah, it's exactly what it is. We talk about the other corporations and companies that do the exact same thing, but we never talk about the insurance companies making billions and billions of dollars off everybody being sick and everything else and. Yeah. I guess I wasn't gonna play that yet, so.
We don't have health insurance in here, thank goodness.
Yeah, so from the twenty twenty-four budget to the twenty twenty-four estimate, that's about an increase of twenty-five percent. Um, so that is why I have the twenty twenty-five budget set so high for insurance is because I am worried about next year.
Keep going.
Any other questions on insurance? I'm sorry, that one's probably worse news.
I've got a lot, but now, now we'll just leave it.
Okay.
We don't have any uh vehicle fleet insurance.
That comes out of the department budgets, so.
Oh, okay. All right.
It increases.
Well, I'll take that.
Oh, yeah, while we're on the subject of that, you know, car insurance went up another thirty something dollars, like that car's brand new or something, you're gonna film that. One of yours.
You mean, you mean trading in those six for twenty-two micro insurance to go up?
It's probably gonna be as much your car payment. Sorry, that's my third event of the day, I'll try to keep it at a minimum.
Next are juvenile fees, so we have juvenile detention, which um we budgeted tw- in twenty twenty-four, a hundred and twelve thousand. So for twenty twenty-five, I did bump that up to a hundred and twenty thousand, just.
You're supposed to connect the lines, we're supposed to get those numbers.
Okay.
Sounds like that's gonna be an interesting meeting.
You know, cause they, they said, are you, it's based on, you were in here, but I said it's a five year, five year average of how many, how many are used each year, they average over five years and our numbers have gone up a lot this year.
Yeah.
So.
The next is juvenile supervision fees. I did lower it um just four hundred dollars, just because in twenty twenty-three, we didn't spend anything. We did budget for twenty-four, fourteen hundred, but for twenty twenty-five, I just, I dropped it a little to one thousand. Any questions on this? Okay, next, bond and interest. So we have, it's actually a decrease. Oh, sorry, sorry, I was looking at the wrong line. It's actually an increase. Uh, but it's because we have in this cash basis requirement of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, historically, the amount budgeted in that line has been a hundred and thirty thousand dollars and state statute allows us to budget up to one hundred percent of the current year's principal and interest payments that are due. This just uh makes sure that we actually, you know, have money to pay those debts. This transfer in from CIP for a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is the series twenty seventeen bond refunding. And then the transfer from economic development is for the Conso Water Project. Any questions on this?
But yeah, I don't know, these special assessments, it's what they, residents pay.
Yep, that is correct.
Aren't we almost at the Conso Water Projects or?
Yes, I believe, um.
Twenty twenty-five.
I have it in my economic development, I believe twenty-five is last year.
So cash basis basically cover when somebody doesn't pay their.
Exactly, I mean, we don't have any, I mean, generally, though, we're only majority pay, but that's how, that's why, as a government entity, we get such a low interest rate, cause they know we can generate the funds even if.
Any other questions on bond and interest? Okay, next is War Memorial, um, kept this relatively flat. Did about nine hundred and fifty dollars for donations and a thousand for contractual services. Questions? That's pretty simple.
Establish that fund back in the day as well, and it was Burke Byer and Dick Jepson, they got that started in our community.
Special alcohol, sorry.
No, you're.
Okay, so special alcohol programs fund, this is a decrease in the budget from twenty twenty-four. Um, just trying to look at what we've actually spent in the past, um, any questions on this? Perfect. Capital improvement. So we'll start with this, these two lines, uh four nine nine zero. So these two are, I mean, it's the same line, but I have this split because this three million one hundred and one thousand forty-three dollars is I have that listed here, sorry. Those are the approved projects that you guys have already approved and that we are working on. The other capital outlet reserves are the reserves that we have setting aside for like hardware refresh, for emergency management, uh FFE reserve, cares funds, fare reserve, and then our CIP reserve, which uh which you mentioned is five hundred thousand dollars, so. And that's why those are be split out, just to give you a very clear picture on, here's approved, here's reserved. And then actually in twenty twenty-five, this one, that hardware, is it? Twenty twenty-five hardware refresh?
That I don't remember.
Just thinking it was twenty-six.
In, yeah.
It started in eight, it was an eight year rotation, so it should be twenty-six.
Yeah, we're getting close on that one, yeah.
And we did have a clause in there where you could refinance that at that same time, but that's not gonna be plausible.
We're working on that project, because the big surprise is, is we're not so sure, we actually had all of that. We're not so sure that wasn't in the original, so.
Yeah, we've been working on that since we started.
So, really, so that, I mean, in between other busy time, but yeah, so that would be a benefit to us cause then you could spend it on capital projects, but we're not so sure.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Now you gotta hear.
And they fly by fast.
They do, they do, they do.
So, my last, good chance I'm misreading things, transfer, we're planning on putting, adding eight point nine million to CIP.
You're, you're not reading wrong, and I'm sure she's about to cover that.
So that proposed tran- uh transfer, this would be a transfer to get our unencumbered cash balance in the general fund at the end of the year to about ten million dollars. I've calculated our twenty-three unaudited ending unencumbered cash balance to be about eighteen million seven hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. In the past, the practice was to do a large transfer at the end of the year to the capital improvement fund. However, in the past few years, since COVID, it has not been.
Nineteen, there hasn't been one since the end of nineteen.
Yeah, it has not been done.
So that's what you're saying, that we really haven't spent a whole lot.
Well, and you know.
I'm not saying we should, but I'm just saying.
Well, and how many, uh, uh, as you know, uh commissioners, cause you lived through it, through COVID, we were overly cautious on doing anything because we didn't know how things were going. Then after we got past COVID and then we get all these ARPA funds and we didn't approve a lot of CIP, as your department heads would tell you because we didn't know what the ambulance was gonna cost. And so that original proposal was way higher and we even had to whittle that down. And so commissioners and us have all discussed, it's, you know, we probably just sit on it and see where it comes. And so traditionally in the past, at the end of the year, we would always transfer anywhere from one point five to two million into CIP of expenditures that didn't get spent or excess revenues. Plus, I mean, just in the last couple of years, look at how much our interest income come in above what was budgeted.
Right.
So that's all part of that, commissioners. So it's in the general fund, has been being and has been invested, that's part of the interest that you're getting, it's going in general fund. But now things have calmed down enough that I think it's time to do that. We, why the eight point nine, typically to start each budget year, we like to sit around ten to eleven million, starting out the budget.
And I can give you, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I thought we did transfer stuff into there at the end of the year last year.
We did last year, last year we transferred in uh the remaining cares fund, there was like one point eight nine in cares.
Yeah, I thought it was, there's, there's stuff that wasn't spent last year.
Yes, that one point eight nine, that that was the cares, that wasn't those unexpendited expenditures and revenues that come in higher than it was expected.
And there was a handful of larger projects during that time we put off too, that those dollars were.
Well, many, uh, you know, our policy's been to have the CIP work sessions quarterly, we haven't had them quarterly for four years now because of all of the extenuating circumstances. And so, yeah, it's a big number now, but had it been done, had it been done each year, that's about where we always ended up.
And I do have listed in my memo um that I am projecting our ending unencumbered cash balance to be for twenty-four to be over eighteen million dollars again for, at the end of this year.
If we don't do this.
If we don't, yes, correct. And then I did also list out our unencumbered cash balances over the last four years. So in twenty nineteen, in general fund, it was eight million one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. In twenty twenty, it was ten million two hundred and twenty-six thousand. In twenty twenty-one, it was fifteen million five hundred and four thousand. And in twenty twenty-two, it was nineteen million three hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, pretty high interest rates there. Okay, so.
So that, isn't this, that's not gonna be add to the war on taxes, that's gonna be transferred, is that?
No, that's money we already have, that's money we already have from expenses that didn't get spent, you know.
So that's what I'm trying to question a couple months ago, why was there so much in there?
Uh huh, yep.
And that's what, and I'm gonna take some of that, okay.
Yep, and then it's all in CIP, it's similar to how, I mean, this is exactly how the shops got built. I mean, commissioners sat on and didn't do CI, CIP projects for years to save up money to do the shops. I mean, we did it with in, in-house uh staff and cash in CIP, that's why we didn't have to go to bond. Another opportunity, as we're discussing earlier, after maybe this fall, to decide, well, now you have some money to maybe do some of this or that or future or pot or.
Needs to go.
Or pot or for fire station or based on what you decide.
So, um, to get to CIP work sessions, first I wanna explain why we haven't had one, because I paused them when we started having um discussions about facilities and I wasn't sure where we were going to move forward with that. So I wasn't sure if you guys wanted to hold a CIP work session in June. Okay. Wait until after the retreat.
Um, but basically I do because I just wanna kinda wanna see where we're at on projects, both for the remainder of this year and next year and just kinda start balancing out.
I am tied into the financial staff, so we know.
What we're working with, what we're.
Yes.
You know, one pile.
Yep. And if we need to take care of a few things up front that are critical.
Yeah.
We could time to discuss that outside of anything John wants, but.
Go ahead, Rich. And, and the thing is, I would, I would agree, you should have one, and I think it is a good opportunity, I mean, there's gonna be equipment in his department, noxious weed, and you know, the timelines, ambulances possibly. You, this should now give you the comfort level, okay, we know we're gonna have the money to do it. So now you can start approving some of those things and still have a comfort level that you can do some of your facility stuff. So, yeah, we need to have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will get one scheduled and I'll get with the department heads. Any other questions on capital improvement?
With that, um, for twenty and, for twenty-four and twenty-five, and make sure the priority is stuff that you need immediate.
Yes.
Being listed as number one and then work number two, number three is more of a down the road type of thing, so we gotta keep all of it in mind.
We have a list that goes out to twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So, yeah, well, they update that at with numbers as they. So, yeah, well, they update that at with numbers as they, uh, see them come in.
Just for twenty four and twenty five, prioritize those based off of basically critical needs. Okay.
Do that.
When you send that memo. Is that, is that fine with everybody? Okay.
Is there a date that anybody is not here in June before I schedule it?
Define here.
Schedule it. I'll, I'll figure out what it is.
Yeah, there you go.
Downtown, right now I don't have anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, hold on a second.
So I also have budget for sessions scheduled almost every day and Monday.
Not before, anything after June fifth is fine.
Anything after June fifth, correct.
We still gotta talk about budget after today?
I know.
I am.
Sorry.
We got eighteen nine dollars, we're covered.
You thought twenty five minutes was bad.
Yeah, we'll turn all summer, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to talk about anything else.
Okay, next is economic development. This is pretty standard. I did highlight in blue here, these are the, uh, budget appropriation requests. I just highlighted them because they obviously have not been approved yet, so I just highlighted them. So we are all tracking, but those are what outside agencies are requesting.
I'm trying to line up the lines there. Sorry, my eyes weren't working. Okay. Okay.
Any questions on economic development?
Questions like what?
I don't know. Do you, I mean, do you have any questions?
But wait a minute, wait a minute.
Anything we disagree on or questions or things we need to talk about?
We set aside a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? She, she taking into account the first twenty five thousand, is that what that is?
Hmm, I thought it was a hundred and twenty five thousand that we set aside. I may have.
Hundred and twenty five over two years, maybe it was a hundred and fifty check.
Yeah, I'll double check.
It should be in the minutes.
Yeah, it was probably, I think you approved a hundred and twenty five thousand additional and.
Hmm, I think that could be right. I think that could be right.
Yeah, so that, that's on me. That's not on anybody else. Uh, I just, I didn't try to split that between two years.
Yeah, and we, we, we talked about that, but I think the total was a hundred and fifty outside of the twenty five that she had already spent.
And when comprehensive plan update, I didn't think we approved, proved to go to seventy five thousand from fifty. I thought we just had fifty thousand.
We had fifty thousand original. That didn't, she spent like twenty five thousand in the original, if, if even.
But that you. Twenty five originally.
Twenty five originally. I believe you approved another hundred and twenty five thousand, so for a total of a hundred and fifty.
For the consulting.
Yes.
So we're gonna pay for it in two years.
Yes.
Okay, but I didn't think it was that much.
Oh, yeah, uh huh.
That's why we got five offers.
Yeah.
Like twenty five thousand's also why we got zero offers before.
Any other, sorry, go ahead.
No, I have a, another thing, let's see, I'm gonna send a quest, question out to. I just kind of have always kind of questioned the Chamber of Commerce. That big amount, um.
About fifty five?
Yeah, and I'd like to see an itemization of that, you know, what they spend on rural.
They did, they did, when they gave the presentation. It was all listed.
If Aaron could send that to her.
Yeah, send it to me again.
And they actually, this year, they're actually changing that up a little bit. Um, same, same dollar range, yeah.
And it's been fifty five thousand for I don't know how many years, you might check that too.
It was originally, yeah, I, all going all the way back to my first year in nineteen, so I'd be fiscal year twenty, it was sixty thousand, and we reduced it to fifty five thousand and took the five thousand to fund downtown Manhattan, because we thought that that was economic development. So it was basically a budget neutral option there. So, and it stayed the same ever since. And they've asked for the same amount ever since.
Yeah. Okay, and I will give that information to you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Riley County Police Department. The main increases that I want to talk about are physician fees. And, um, we did increase repair and maintenance of buildings and grounds, um, because that is our responsibility to take care of that building. Um, I know Rich provides in his monthly reports, the amount of inmate medical and everything that we have been providing, and that is also going up quite a bit. So we are in negotiations with A C H training. Any questions on our C P D?
We're, yeah, in terms of the actual budget, budget. Um, yeah, we'll be discussing that on Monday, but I'm, I'm figuring something on the neighborhood of six percent is gonna probably, it's gonna pass. And so saying I'm gonna vote for that, but I'm just, that's what you're looking at. So, I'm gonna use an estimation on that. That's probably what I would go with.
Okay. Okay, well, that concludes all of my budgets. Do you have any questions about any of my budgets before I go to the next item? Okay. So I was asked to discuss um, revenues for General Fund and Health Department as well as, um, their expenditures. So this is really just a snapshot of our twenty twenty three actuals. And of course, our twenty twenty four budgets to really give you an idea of how these compare. Um, are there any like major questions?
Kind of the question comes from, you know, the percentage that we spend on wages and benefits compared to overall revenue coming in, which you can see. I don't, I, it's a lot lower than I would think a lot of people think it is because they don't take into account, you know, stuff we do at Road and Bridge is expensive, those contractual commodities and stuff. And so still, the salaries and benefits is a lot, but on our overall budget, it's not like it's eighty percent.
So, okay, yeah. Well, I, I think the one thing to take into consideration when you're trying to look at it, current year, fiscal year next year, three, four years out is kind of what that cycle's doing several years prior. And I've just got a two-year comparison, but I mean, even when you're looking at that, um, it goes from about twenty three million to almost twenty seven million. That number's not exact, of course, but I mean, it's, it's a pretty large year-to-year increase if you're just taking the two years there. So. Turns it just, and probably when I haven't had a chance to look at it in full, but, um, probably a good percentage of that is insurance. We've already had that conversation, so I'll leave it. But even just looking, just glancing at the, just the general fund on, on salaries, I mean, that's still two million per year. So.
And if commissioners want more years back, we can get you more years, but we just started out with that.
Just gotta, you know, get more years.
I did.
She has it all.
About the same.
Yeah, and I did calculate percentages, um, I won't say them because I want to make sure I give you the right number, but we're all numbers, um, but it, it's nowhere near eighty percent.
Yeah.
So.
Eighty percent for salaries, that is the boost.
Mm-hmm, that's a lot of people commonly think.
Yeah.
There are, the majority of our departments are like slurks or treasures because we're service oriented, you know, we don't have much in our three Cs, but when you take in C I P and public works and noxious weed for chemicals, you know, you know.
I, I don't think I took in.
I T.
Yeah, I didn't take in C I P into my calculations when I was doing that, but, uh, it was way lower than eighty percent. I'm sorry, eighty percent.
That's good useful information.
You know, it's like just a general glance, it's somewhere in the forty percent range, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And with two minutes to spare.
Let's talk about station wagons.
It's funny, I had the same thought as Catherine, because I almost called Brittany, I said, you really think you need forty five minutes? And look at where we sit.
Good call. That's why you're the numbers person.
Next question, Scott Carmichael at two o'clock.
Okay.
So I think I just heard there's eighteen million weighing around. Just a small, small.
Hey, you wanna revise your budget request now?
Are you all ready for me or?
Give me, uh, right up till two o'clock here.
Okay, sounds.
Oh, you know what? Go ahead, we're close enough. Yeah, I'm not gonna worry about it. You're the second to last one here, so we're ready to kind of be done. With the discussion part of it. Okay, so go ahead.
Well, uh, for county funding, the bottom line is no change in slap our, uh, request last year, which reflects essentially no change for a decade. Um, we're able to do that in part. Uh, you'll see one line item on my, uh, budget this year is a Kansas Department of Ag Division of Conservation Archaeologist position. There's a need for archaeologists within the Natural Resource Conservation Service to clear a big backlog of cultural resource concerns, field work and computer work. Um, so with funding provided by N R C S and the Division of Conservation, uh, nothing out of our general fund or out of our, you know, founding allocation. Uh, we're able, uh, to hire an archaeologist to support N R C S. Uh, he's been recruited and hired since, uh, Monday. And part of what we get when we do that is a comparatively small administrative fee that helps pay for the excess work that I do and Moore does to supervise and do admin, uh, for that. But that's an example of kind of newfound money on our already pretty small budget, uh, that helps us be able to keep that type of thing in line. Um. So the, the salaries and benefits and, you know, personnel costs are certainly much higher, but that includes that, uh, archaeologist position. We do have our conservation technician position currently open and are recruiting for replacement there. Uh, our, our prior person did a fantastic job for us, uh, that was called, uh, to get back home, uh, to her family's farm. And, uh, and we miss her, but, uh, she's where she needs to be now. Um, we have retained some of that funding, and it'll just carry over fiscal year to fiscal year when we do get that position replaced. Our information and education, uh, remains unchanged. Um, I'll, I'll tell you that we're getting a lot of bang for the buck on that. Uh, we just recently cycled through our ag days in Riley, Geary, and Wabunse County where, uh, we brought out our stream erosion trailer. Uh, hundreds and hundreds of kiddos going through that. Had the soil tunnel trailer at, uh, the Flynn Hills Discovery, uh, Center event, uh, was that last weekend, weekend before? And at the end of that day, I thought to myself, there had to have been two thousand people come through here. And, uh, I talked to the event organizers at the end of the day, and their count was six thousand. And I think we had every bit after that go through. Now I had a food truck speaker here and the, uh, what is it? The mechanical bowl speaker here. So there weren't a lot of deep conversations. But there were a few, and the few that I had are in, in breaks, uh, people really, really enjoyed that. Also on education, I'll share that, uh, our environment season has come and gone. And Manhattan High did not win state this year. Uh, they did a great, great job. Uh, Saint John's School out of Beloit won, uh, the state competition. Will go to the national levels. Uh, but again, our own Manhattan High really, really did great. Um, so the breakdown is Riley County funding request unchanged at fifty five, one thirty six. Um, I'm estimating our Division of Conservation funding to be right at the full twenty five thousand that's currently allowed by statute. Uh, I will share with you that there is, uh, work underway at the Division of Conservation, uh, level and other partners, N R C S, K A C D. Uh, House Bill, I want to say it was House Bill twenty eight hundred that went up through the House and then didn't make it through the Senate because it got attached to something else regarding. Him or something, I don't know. Um, but, but there's work underway to look at increasing that, that maximum, uh, fund matching, uh, at a county level. So more to come on that if and when anything materializes there. Uh, we also, uh, of course, have that new line item for the eight thousand three fifty four for the uh, funding for the D O C positions. So we're anticipating, uh, expanding around a hundred and sixty eight thousand this year with equal funding. Uh, give or take, uh, some of that'll depend on when we get those positions filled and, and, uh, how that goes. Uh, but I think that is it in a nutshell for our financial request. Any questions on any of that? Last note that I jot into myself since I have you, about this time last year, we did a, a field tour. Any interest in repeating that this year again? It's pretty soupy out there right now. That's why I've not been too much on it yet.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll put something together. We've already kicked around some ideas.
I need to see the trailer. I don't think you guys have seen that soil trailer. Yeah.
Good.
I have. It's pretty cool.
It really is neat, yeah.
Start in the tour maybe with that.
Okay.
Best thought.
I'll get a little Cindy then to start with eighty days. And then just.
You know, it probably dry up here.
Yeah, it might, might be a little warm. We might maybe wait. Past the hot part of summer, maybe?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Oh, Josh, we can go out and do a fence viewing at a hundred and thirty degrees.
I didn't want to. Hopefully I never have to do that one again.
I didn't know if that was typically an, an annual type of thing or every couple of years or whenever.
For me, it's hard to say because of COVID, but we did one in nineteen and that was good. And then we did it for a couple of years, obviously, and got getting back to it, but I'll leave it up to you guys, which if you want to, I'm, I'm always game for it. I was on something new, so that's the whole point.
I'll get to work on that. Any other questions before I get out of your hair? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner, you have already filled in. At two fifteen or earlier?
I'm gonna go with earlier unless you wanna wait till two fifteen.
Well, you know, I have, I needed a bottom of nails, uh.
That's pretty important.
It is, especially if I don't want to hurt.
We'll make the adjustment in your appropriations.
Yeah.
See the end of the day.
You tell it's been a long day.
You're the very last one of the, of a four day stretch, so yeah, yeah.
You can breathe. Well, thank you for having me. Um, hopefully you have a copy of my report for this year, uh, and my, uh, budget uh, request, uh, just a couple of things I'd like to highlight, and then I, of course, I'd be, I'd have to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, we are currently serving two hundred and twenty eight clients. Uh, a hundred and seventeen of them are from Riley County. Uh, as you all know, uh, County Mill Levy is crucial to Big Lakes in our transportation program. We could not operate without, uh, having transportation funds because, of course, ninety nine percent of the people that we serve can't drive, so we have to have a way of getting them to where they need to go. Uh, we are currently have a fleet of about forty vehicles, uh, that varies from day to day. Uh, I, John's.
No, we've had that conversation, so I know exactly where you're going with that.
If you didn't know, we had a, a pretty major accident that happened at the beginning of April and it totaled out one of our buses, uh, we're in the process of, uh, trying to get a replacement. Um, that, that's really interesting to do. Of course, the, the large buses cost a hundred and thirty some thousand dollars. Now, interestingly enough, four years ago, they cost sixty five.
And you can get them in six months.
Yeah, if we're lucky. Um, so what we are doing, um, we, we took delivery in March, uh, on two K D O funded buses, large buses that we had requested in twenty twenty. Uh, and so the lag time is huge. Uh, and we can't wait, and so, cause we have to have that replacement. Right now, uh, the, the home that it serves, um, we've got multiple people in wheelchairs and in order for us to get people transported to the day program and for them participating activities, we have to have two vehicles to do it. Uh, which before we had one. So I'm in the process of piecing together what we're getting in our insurance proceeds. Uh, what I can scrape off of our capital budget, and then I'm applying for a grant. Uh, not for K D I, it's, it's a private grant. So, uh, hopefully I'll hear about that here in the next few weeks, uh, so we can proceed with buying one, uh, cause we just can't do without. Um, as it was, I had in our capital budget to buy, uh, a um, a, a replacement van, uh, for this year. And a week before the accident, one of our wheelchair accessible minivans. um, a a replacement van uh for this year and a week before the accident, one of our wheelchair accessible minivans chock crashed. And so we had to. So so that's the rest of my budget for the year. But but that's how things are going with transportation. Uh, uh, our, the age of our fleet just keeps getting older because what we used to do a number of years ago is we had a pretty good rotation on on our vehicles and that with COVID, that just all came to a stop. So uh I see our maintenance costs going up. Uh, also just general uh expenditures for transportation is going up because we are serving more people. Since uh a year ago, when we opened emissions, we actually uh had increased the number of people we are serving in day services by twenty-four. Was it July thirteen and case management by nineteen? So again, more demand uh uh for those services. So um, I'm asking for a very modest two percent uh and pretty simply look at the at the report, you will see the last four or the last five years, we lost money in transportation. I'm trying to maintain an even strain there uh regarding transportation. What we're looking at is an increase of four thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars uh for a total appropriation of two hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-five. Other than that, the only other thing I was wanting to uh update you about is uh the waiting list. Um, if you were at the the chamber meeting, you uh which I was tickled uh that my question was chosen uh because I think it's important to keep people informed. I I kind of knew what the legislators would say and I wanted them to say it because I wanted other people to hear what was going on with the waiting list. Uh, as you know, uh, the waiting list is long. In Riley County, we have fifty-six people that are waiting for services, uh a total of a hundred and twenty-three in the four counties that we serve. And five, over five thousand, almost fifty-five hundred people that are waiting statewide. The state did appropriate five hundred slots uh to be filled uh with uh funds available to life. First, we were notified two days ago that twenty-five would be coming to our area. But the biggest problem we have right now is capacity to serve. I told you all about all the individuals, what we moved into services, we're at maximum capacity. And the only way we could serve these people is to expand services. I cannot expand services if I can't find staff and I've got thirty-one openings right now. There's that.
True.
It's going back up again. We had a nice dip when we got. Yeah, uh, we cut it in half when we got uh was able to raise our wages to sixteen dollars an hour. That was in twenty-twenty-two and two years later, we haven't been able to do anything since then and you know how the market is right now uh for for employees. So um that I have talked with Senator Ready and Representative Titus and Representative Dodson and so forth about the struggles with getting the waiting list taken care of because if you don't have the capacity to serve the and providers can't bring people in, it doesn't matter how much money you put in for waiting list. It's not gonna be spent because people can't find services. So it's a real dichotomy uh issue for us. And one of those issues is transportation. Think about it. If I have to open up another group home or two, I need a couple more vehicles. Where am I gonna find the money for that?
Uh, if you're opening up other facilities, you need the facilities too. And when do you open up those?
See, lots and lots of questions. Not to mention, especially residential services, residential is really tough because we need to have affordable, accessible housing, okay? And when you're talking accessible housing, usually people ask, well, why do you build group homes? That's why. Because you can't find accessible housing just out in the market someplace. So we build them to fit the needs of the people we serve. That costs money too. So and retrofitting houses is, we've done it. But it's not a very efficient way of doing it. Let's do it that way. So lots of obstacles in the way not overcomeable, but there are lots of obstacles and we need the resources for for that. And the big, big one is people. We just need, we need people. And I thought Representative Titus did a very nice job of explaining how uh what a challenge it is for all businesses, but for us, there's very specific kinds of people who can do what we do. Like, it's a hard job. It's a very hard job taking care of people. Uh, and everybody in human services experiences that, not just us. So um, uh, that's, that's my presentation. Uh, any questions for me? We appreciate the support you give us every year. You know, we couldn't do it without you. So thank you for that. And of course, if you have any questions at any time, you can always contact me.
That was good to think I that that your question made that is, I mean, here we've heard a lot of it, that a lot of those people probably had. And it got the word out to a lot of people in the community that this is probably, you know.
Anytime I have the opportunity to get something set out in the community, speak out in the community about this, we, most people have no idea that kids graduating from special ed programs are going on to waiting list for nine years.
Yeah, and seven to nine years, most of them have almost at that point are aging out, the ability to even.
Yeah, they lose all of the skills that they learned while they were in school and we're we're starting over uh again. And not to mention, we like to get people promote independence as much as possible and getting employment and what they've learned in that seven to nine year period is I can sit on the couch and do nothing. Uh, and that's not what they should be doing. So.
But I might mention that's kind of an attitude, just in general.
We don't like to promote that.
No, 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 I agree. I agree.
Any other questions for me? But I'm glad that you were there.
Um, how's the rough campaign going?
Uh, we are just almost halfway. We're at forty-eight percent. So uh we're we're making good progress there.
Okay, good.
Uh, and as you know, we did replace the roof. We got solar panels on. I've uh applied for our tax credits with the federal government uh for that, which is great. And we have saved, I think the last time I looked, just under twenty-five thousand dollars in uh electrical costs, electricity costs. So.
For a year or how how?
Since November.
Since November.
Since November, yeah.
What's your total roof project cost?
Uh, the roof itself with the the solar panels was nine hundred thousand. Now we have three more phases to this project that we're not gonna do until we raise the money, but the we had to get that roof replaced.
And how are you raising the money?
Uh, our foundation, uh, I'm doing active fundraising and we're applying for grants. We've gotten several grants uh through the greater Manhattan Community Foundation. Of course, all of our proceeds from regretting this year went towards the Raisin Roof Project. So uh and then I'm hitting up individual donors. So if you'd like to contribute, Rich.
Brittany has.
She's got a station button that she can auction them off.
And you can keep the proceeds from her.
Paperwork here. So, uh, anything else for me?
No.
All right. Well, yeah, thank you very much. Uh, and a- as challenging as all this is, I think what uh the work that we do at Big Lakes is so critical to the community and I appreciate your support. So.
Thank you.
Not you.
Was that fast enough for you?
Works for me.
All right.
Thank you, Lori.
Good luck with the budget again. There you go.
Thank you. Okay, we did it. I think, didn't we? We got a few scraggles, I think.
Yeah, you still have extension coming up.
Right. That's it?
That's just due to that statutory requirement, right?
And so it's. But then I'll actually just combine it and see what happens.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't have to combine it. Somebody else does the percentage of us.
We'll see how that goes. And we still have to talk about personnel side.
Yeah.
And when does um certifications come in? June fifteenth?
Not in the middle of June.
Yeah. We have some time. Okay, well, I don't have anything else. It's been a day. Yeah. Thankfully, we don't have no city county county meeting to deal with today.
Agreed.
So we don't have to extend the day. You can go around and cruise some roads in that new that new Charger.
I got a doctor's appointment that I had to postpone till after these.
Uh, so good.
I do that.
Yeah, yeah. I don't envy you.
Nine o'clock. I've had to call him and sketch.
Except I have anything else.
Well, I don't know. I would like, I would make a motion to adjourn the uh May sixteenth meeting of the Board of Riley County Commission.
Second. Been moved and seconded to adjourn the May sixteenth meeting of the Riley County Commission. All in favor?